I get paid.
All right, everybody, we're gonna get going. Okay, everybody, can we quiet down the room so we can get going? Okay, everybody, we're gonna get rolling if we could, appreciate it. Can I have the roll call, please?
Dannerway?
Here.
Gibson?
Here.
Kaplan?
Sure.
Armspeed?
Here.
Satterfield?
Here.
Stoltenberg?
Here.
Winland?
Here. All right, we had minutes from March fifteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the minutes of March fifteenth as submitted.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, we have, it looks like a record crowd in my fourteen or fifteen or sixteen years here, so we welcome you. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission. We are a recommending body appointed by the mayor and the city council to review site plans, land use, and zoning matters. When it comes time to provide public input, which there are a lot of here to do, I see, we would like to hear that, and we ask that you use the podium to my right and to your left, way back there in the green shirt kind of by the podium, okay, by Mr. Dugan, and, okay, back there. That's where we'd like to come back. That's the only place we can pick up your audio, okay? So, there is audio, just so you know, out in the hall for those out there, but we can't pick up any voice there. There's also a YouTube, I believe, broadcast in the far room down there if you want to watch that. That shall be simulcast on YouTube. Am I saying that right, Mark?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. So, we're asking that you refrain from outbursts, clapping, and yelling, and please be respectful with your comments. So let's use good decorum. Regarding the rezoning proposal at fifty nineteen Hopewell, on the agenda, we have one public hearing on the agenda for that case tonight. If you're here to make comment on that case, you'll want to do it when we open the public hearing. So I'll make notice to the audience, we're gonna open the public hearing. That would be the time to make your input on that case, and then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have discussion on it. When we open the case for twenty-three oh one eight and five zero one nine, Hopewell Avenue, that will, let me see if I got that right. If you're here to make comment on that case, you want to do it, public hearing. Open the public hearing. I'll have six or seven different public hearings for that. You're welcome to comment at the first one relative to all of them, or each one if you so elect, but it would be most efficient if you chose one to do it rather than repeat the same thing six or seven times. It won't help to send in more ballots to try and win in this case, but we do want to hear your input, so.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think, just if I may clarify.
Did I say backwards?
I think there might have been just a misspoken word there. So we have the Hopewell case, one public hearing on that.
Public hearing.
Forest Grove case, seven public hearings.
Seven public hearings, okay.
But you can just speak at the first one if you want.
Yep.
And it will count across all the cases that are related to the Forest Grove case.
Better said. All right. All right, however, we will consider anything said in the first public hearing. Just said that, so I've covered it all. I've covered the YouTube. I've got the notes out of the way then, right?
Yeah, yes, and, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, we will go over this as we get to the Forest Grove and Devil's Glen rezoning, because it is a more complicated procedural matter, and so we will go over that again when we get there.
That would be appreciated.
Is that we will take a break after the Hopewell.
I have noted bathroom break after Hopewell, yes, sir.
So.
Plan accordingly.
Yeah, there's only one of each kind right back there that I'm aware of, so.
Okay.
All right. With that, we will begin.
Thank you, Chairman. So the first case on the agenda, first two cases on the agenda, case twenty-two dash zero nine seven, that case has been deferred to the May seventeenth meeting at request of the applicant's site plan for D.C. eight district. And case twenty-three dash zero twelve, which is a site development plan for twenty-five seventy Middle Road. So those both will be deferred to the May seventeenth meeting. The next case, item six, is case twenty-three dash twenty-six. This is a final plat for Encore Central Avenue subdivision. Background on this, the applicant is James Rashy of Encore Homes. He is requesting a final plat which proposes two lots. This is located just north of Central Avenue and west of the Devil's Glen Road intersection. The site is proposed to be developed into two single-family attached homes. So we have a map there showing the site. This site is designated as urban low intensity on the future land use map, comp plan. The current zoning at the site is R-three mixed residential district. Large R-one, a single-family residence lot is just to the north. There's only one home on that, and then there's Duck Creek. To the south, west, south, and east, we have some, we have R-three and R-four lots along Central Avenue. Looking at the proposed plat, we see two lots. There is an Outlet A. Outlet A represents a dedication of right-of-way, public right-of-way to the city. This is for aligning central avenues right-of-way with the subdivision that's located to the west. There's varying different widths of right-of-way. This is an older part of town, so we've had, we decided to have the right-of-way aligned with the western subdivision, which was platted, I believe, in the seventies. The proposed lots meet the bulk standards for single-family attached homes, so that's side by side, and then the lot line will run right through them. And those standards include width, minimum lot area, et cetera. And the single-family attached homes are a permitted use in the R-three zoning district. Here's actually a rendering the applicant provided, kind of showing you what they will look like on this lot. There was a home here previously, a single-family detached home, which was demolished in the past few years. So this is redevelopment of the area. Having said that, staff recommends approval of the final plat of Encore Central Avenue subdivision, twenty-three dash zero two six, and I can take any questions.
Thanks, Taylor, appreciate it. Mark, anything else since presentation and publication? Nope. All right. I need to open a public hearing then, correct?
No, I think it's not just a final plat.
Oh, final plat, sorry, sorry, all right. Questions from the commission? No questions from the commission. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case two-three dash zero two six, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-three dash zero two six, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Twenty-three zero two six is recommended for approval.
All right.
Okay.
Next few cases, Mr. Beck has.
Mr. Chairman, the case we have before us involves a retail establishment that is proposed for a particular location, Middle Road and Woodfield Drive intersection, southwest corner. It's outlined here in purple, and that is Lot Two, Crown Point, twelfth edition. The applicant is Chris Win of C.J.W. Consultants, and he is standing in for Dollar Tree, which is anticipating a location here. The site development plan is what is being applied for for this area. As you can see, that there is a great deal of commercial within this region. This is C-two, the community commercial district. We have R-five, which is high-density multifamily residence district here. Over here, we have R-four, medium-density multifamily residence district, and we even have some A-two rural residence district here. This is C-one right here, neighborhood commercial district, and the area here is C-three general business district. So you can see a variety of different types of commercial. The more intense commercial is as you get toward Middle Road and Belmont at that particular intersection. This is the land use scheme. We have urban high intensity here. We have, again, the urban medium intensity throughout here, and then the rest is pretty much community commercial. And then we have institutional where the Bettendorf Christian Church presently is. This particular plat was done in two thousand and sixteen, and it was split. There is a means of access right here, common access point for both lots one and two. And also, there was anticipated an entry that would come through Lot Two. The lot in question here is one point two five acres. The proposed building is here, ninety-nine hundred, nine thousand nine hundred seventy square feet. The parking requirement is met with fifty spaces. The tree count will be accommodated by higher caliber trees being planted, and we also anticipate some means of vegetation here, but it will have to be planted at a certain height, because there are high-temperature power lines that are over, basically strung over this area, and that is something that has to be accounted in the factor here. If we're putting up a buffer area for vegetation is the proximity of the vegetation to the overhead power lines. There's also entry here, and here's the shared entry going onto Middle Road, traffic coming in from Woodfield to this locale. The building elevations, here's the Dollar Tree front facing Middle Road, and here's the other building elevations. And looking at this, because it meets goal C, attract and retain business and industry, this particular proposal does, and it is code compliant, staff would make a recommendation for approval with the conditions that are listed here. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you. Greg, Mark, anything since publication or presentation? Nope. Questions and comments from the commission?
Greg, can you show us the aerial photo again? Okay, so there are some, there is multifamily to the north there. And I see on the site plan, all the trees are planted along Middle Road, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And that is, again, due to the height issue.
Right.
These are deciduous trees. We, I did contact the consultant and let him know that you may be open to some type of hedges or something that may not grow that tall. It might be six to eight feet in height that could be used to buffer this area as opposed to maybe a fence.
Because we did, we did receive a letter, which I read.
That I have here.
Pointed out that their, the site plan could benefit from buffering on that side. I'm sure there's plenty of plant materials that could be utilized there that wouldn't grow as tall, would provide the buffer, but not interfere with the overhead issues. So, I don't know. I just think from a neighbor standpoint, that might be more neighbor-friendly. And it's just a matter, it's not additional planting, it's just relocating.
You could, what, again, in discussing this with the consultant, even though those hedges will not make a tree count, they can still act as a buffer. And then the overall tree count will be met by using the caliper deciduous overstory trees. So I think that's something that we can work out between now and city council.
Okay, I think that sounds like a good compromise. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to bootstrap on what Ann just said, the letter was from Karen Hillman or Hillman, and referencing the landscape she had noted, the landscape proposed for the Woodfield Drive side lots discusses shrubs, not trees, or a dense buffer. The plan shows a metal wall on the Woodfield side with no trees to break the view. Can a berm with evergreens be planted to enhance the side view? And one of the questions I had, I've encountered under other utility easements and things that you're not able to change the grade, per se, so is birmingham even an option in that area, Greg?
I don't think that you would want to attempt to do that, because there are utilities that are already present on this site, and also, again, you want to maintain. What you're trying to do is establish the shield. The birmingham isn't really going to do much. It's going to be what type of evergreen material is planted there, and the height that it'll grow to, that's going to be more important, and that it grows together.
Other questions or comments from the commission?
Is there a reason we're not lining up the exit from the parking lot with Crown Point Circle?
The, you mean this area here off of Woodfield?
Right, yes.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't think that the traffic volume is necessarily that strong coming in, and I think there was a.
I can answer that. Scott, with that being offset to the left, you don't have conflicting left turns, which is our main concern when you have an offset intersection. If it was to propose to the right of Crown Circle, then you could have those conflicting left turns. So with the location that they have, we don't have any concern.
Okay, and one more thing, doesn't necessarily pertain for this now, but when that other lot comes in, I thought our original intention here was to limit the access on the Middle Road, and the Duck Creek Tire Service, you got the entrance with Lindquist and Duck Creek Tire Service. I thought the, at one time, we wanted that to go all the way through to Woodland Drive with whatever these, whatever these other two businesses would be.
No, this was platted with this shared entrance. That was the agreement the last time it was brought forward. So there will only be one access, however, for the two lots.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the commission? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Yes, sir. We'll catch you back there at the podium, please. Just give us your name and address, and then your feedback would be appreciated.
Good evening, Chairman, members of Planning Commission. My name is Chris Win. I'm a civil engineer with C.J.W. Transportation Consultants out of Springfield, Missouri. And I'm representing the developer, which is Ridge Investment Group, who's working for Dollar Tree to provide this store. I've done quite a few stores across the Midwest. So I'm pretty familiar with their operations. You know, I think, you know, planning staff has really covered most of the points I'd like to touch on. You know, we're in C-two zoning. We're meeting your guys' comprehensive plan for uses. I think the biggest concern is the landscaping. My original submittal to the city actually did show a continuous row of shrubs across, across the parking lot there on the, call it the northeast side that faces Woodfield Drive. It was later taken away for two reasons. That power line easement, that transmission line easement is a restrictive easement. It does not allow any plantings. It specifically calls out trees, but also mentions fences, gardens, and shrubs. So while we can plant in there, and ultimately, if that's the decision of planning, the planning board, we'd be more than happy to put those shrubs in there, but that does not stop the power line company from coming and removing those if they don't see that as something that they want in their easement. So it was taken away for that reason. Also, the other concern I have, and like I said, if you guys want the shrubs, we can certainly work something out through, before we go to city council. But the other concern is, is you guys don't give any credit for planting shrubs. You guys only look at trees, and you guys want us to have a seventeen-tree factor on the site, which is understandable, but I feel like if we need to plant a continuous row of twenty shrubs across there, that's got to count towards something, or at least in my opinion, it should count as something, maybe a quarter point per shrub or something, so that we can reduce the amount of trees we're planting out there. But, you know, ultimately, it's your guys' decision. You know, we're crunched on time here. They got to deliver this store by fall. So if we need to, if we need to put in the shrubs, we'll certainly agree to put in the shrubs. Second comment I heard that there was some questions about was access. Yeah, we're using the shared access off of Woodfield, or not off Woodfield, but the shared access off of Middle Road. That intends to be the main point of access for this development. We do have the second access to Woodfield Drive. They do prefer circulation in their parking lots. It's easier to get people in and out if they have more than one access, but it also helps with the delivery vehicle. They've got to be able to get a delivery vehicle in there to that, it's that loading dock. And it's not actually a dock. It's not recessed or anything. It's just a delivery door, double-man door that they'll pull a vehicle into and unload, but it helps that truck get out. They're pretty particular about their truck path. It's not allowed to cross any of the parking stalls, and it's got to stay within the curb limits, so that access is necessary for us to have. The other things I would comment on is there's a regional stormwater basin for this development. It has been requested by the city that we provide water quality. We have added a water quality basin there on the north northwest corner. That'll have a low-flow plate that's designed to drain in twenty-four to forty-eight hours, so that that sediment can settle out, but it also doesn't become a mosquito pond by holding water for weeks on end, so. Stormwater's addressed. We won't, we won't be causing any issues there. It goes to the north northwest when it drains from the site. Really, those are the main points I wanted to cover, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have for me.
All right, thank you, Chris. Any further questions from the commission? Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Yes, sir.
We found out.
Hey, can you tell us who you are and your address?
I'm sorry, Thomas Carter, and I live at four zero three six Woodfield Drive.
Thank you.
Directly across the street from this planned area. In doing some diligence here on this, because we just found out recently this was a Dollar Tree store, I started to do some research, and I found some interesting information provided by a study that was done by the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. It is not just their opinion. There's like thirty-five footnotes on this. The title of the research is Seventeen Problems: How Dollar Stores Chain Hurt Communities. I will tell you, before I get into this, I'm not going to go through all seventeen of these, but there are some things here that I thought were surprising and germane. I did not know that Dollar Tree is not Better Business Bureau accredited. On their Better Business Bureau reviews, they get a one point one three out of five ranking. Also, anecdotally, today I visited two stores, Dollar Tree stores, on the Iowa side of the river, and I have to tell you, I was appalled. They were filthy. The aisles were way overpacked with excess inventory that had to be a safety hazard, all kinds of concerns, and this gets touched on in this report. And I'm going to quote from this a bit. "Chain dollar stores are inundating America's communities. In both small towns and urban neighborhoods, they are edging out locally-owned businesses, freezing out entrepreneurs, and shifting profits from local cash registers to corporate investors' pockets. Their poor labor practices, lax security, and sloppy safety protocols harm workers. Chain dollar stores have earned notoriety for their low pay, but they have come under fire for other labor policies and practices as well. Many of these are the result of their sparse staffing, requiring workers to multitask to keep overhead costs low. Store managers complain they must work long hours to meet their goals because they cannot adequately staff their stores on their thin payroll budgets. Workers are often required to sign arbitration agreements, keeping potential labor-related lawsuits out of the courts and out of the public eye. Chain dollar stores' poor labor practices have gotten Congress's attention. In April twenty twenty-two, Senator Patty Murray, Chair of the Senate Committee on Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions, asked the CEOs of Dollar General and Dollar Tree Family Dollar to turn over documents about their labor practices and policies, demanding that they explain their shameful labor practices and commit to making significant improvement. The next section concerns dollar stores extracting wealth from the community. Locally-owned businesses spend a large percent of their profits locally. They pay rent, buy supplies, hire accountants, lawyers, and other professionals, engage cleaning and trash collection services, buy advertising, buy utility services, pay property and sales tax, support local schools, civic and charitable groups, hire staff, and much more. They also support their owners' households, their staff's households, and many local businesses from which those households pay for housing, transportation, food, clothing, personal and professional services, entertainment, education, and many other things. By contrast, only a modest percentage of dollar chain's profits remain in the community. They flow back to the corporation, and the corporation then spends the profits on expansion, shareholder dividends, stock buybacks to beef up their share price, and director's compensation. Even their rent payments usually go to out-of-area developers who specialize in developing and leasing buildings to dollar store properties. Numerous studies have shown that roughly forty-five to sixty percent of a dollar spent in a locally-owned business remains and recirculates in the community versus only fourteen to thirty percent spent in chain stores.
Thomas, can I interrupt you for a second? Since we're focused on the code references and the real estate development, can you try and focus the elements on the things that we would have in our purview relative to a zoning approval and site plan? Because notwithstanding all those things probably being very true, they're not within our field of purview for this particular deal. So if you can give us relevant facts to the development, that would be appreciated.
The next segment, I think, is germane. In addition to their potential impact on commercial property tax revenue, dollar stores can have a negative impact on residential property values, which in turn affects tax revenue. A twenty twenty-two study by Clemson University, for example, found that the presence of a nearby dollar store diminished property values by sixteen to twenty-one percent, while the presence of a nearby grocery store increased property values by fourteen percent. A Georgia sheriff told CNN, "We don't call them dollar stores. We call them stopping robs." In Dayton, Ohio, where more than one quarter of all commercial robberies in two thousand and nineteen took place at Dollar General stores, a police detective called them robber magnets. OSHA has been tremendously involved in all kinds of issues. I'm not going to go into all these with the dollar store. In twenty twenty-one, the Department of Labor issued a press release stating that Dollar General continues to put its workers in danger, et cetera, et cetera. The only other thing that I note here is we have three full-service grocery stores, three convenience stores, a pharmacy, an office supply, an art supply store, all within a ten-minute walk of this proposed facility. We're not being underserved. We don't need this, and Bettendorf doesn't need it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience? I see a hand back there.
My name is Chris Thielbert. I also live in the condo association right across the street from this. My address is thirty-five oh four Crown Point Circle. I'm also a member of Bettendorf Christian Church, and I am very concerned about the increase of traffic that is going to come because of this particular store. I can tell you from fact that people cut through from Middle Road down Woodfield across Bettendorf Christian Church's parking lot and out past those green apartments onto Devil's Glen Road. As a member of Bettendorf Christian Church, I also want you to know that we have several programs there for children, and I have been in that parking lot and seen people scream through there at thirty-five, forty miles an hour easily as they're cutting through. Putting this kind of a store there is going to bring people who are going to come flying through there, and they will use that shortcut, and it will put people in danger. I just want you to consider that also.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jerry Kishui, thirty-four hundred Crown Point Circles. My concern is that when this was referenced, it was referenced that the condo, or not condo, but townhome neighborhood that I live in was a high-density, whatever property. There are sixteen private homes there, and the assessed value of that is five million dollars total collectively. And I just, and all of our assessments have gone up forty or fifty thousand dollars in the last year. And I don't see how putting a low, what do I want to say? Low-value dollar. Low-value dollar store across the street from a high-value neighborhood. And obviously, y'all think it's a high-value neighborhood because our taxes and our assessments have gone up that much and are that much. And I just don't think that we need to be cheapening our neighborhood by putting in a Dollar Tree.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Karen Heilman. Thank you for reading my letter. I live at 4032 Woodfield, so I am really right across as well from this. And I wanted to reference something that was spoken of earlier about the most of the traffic will go in on Middle Road. And yet, I'm noting that the pylon sign for this store will be right by Woodfield Road, which to me will divert the traffic more toward Woodfield and into our development. And that bothers me because we already have an issue with that, you know, Middle Road tends to go right to two lanes right at Woodfield. So all of a sudden, people will be slowing down when they're used to speeding up. Is there any thought, are you going to be putting a traffic light in that area with the development also at 4100 Middle Road? And that additional traffic that would be coming?
I don't think so. Going to look at Brent right now.
It's just going to get really congested there. Is there any way you could move the pylon sign more toward the Middle Road entrance?
I think if it's located there, it's going to block people's view when they're trying to exit the store.
That would be the trade-off. The farther you get closer, the closer you get to Middle Road, then your field of view. But I'll defer to the engineer and our engineer about optimal placement.
Ultimately, I guess it depends on the style of the sign. You know, if it's called a pylon sign, I don't know if that's all continuous, more of a monument sign, or if it has a tapered base. Ultimately, that would be at the commission's. I mean, if you wanted it moved and the applicant was amenable to it, I'm sure they could find a location that would work. But ultimately, when it comes to Middle Road, that section is three lanes through there.
It changes right at that intersection.
I would anticipate, it's been in and out of our five-year plan to finish the four lanes down to Tanglefoot. And part of that is the trail, unfortunately, with there, and some relocation of that. But as traffic continues, that will happen sooner than later. At which point, you wouldn't have the necking down of it.
Anyone else with regard to?
I'm getting out of that, out of Woodfield to turn left now. I can't imagine additional traffic there.
Well, that's why what Brent's referencing is that there's some arterials within the city, Middle Road being a key one. We're going to talk about Devil's Gun a little bit later. Devil's Gun will eventually be a four-lane road all the way to Forest Grove. Middle Road will be a four-lane all the way along. It's all coming. So at some point, some intersections will qualify for stoplights and things, others won't. It's all a function of the average daily traffic count and turns.
We have what are called traffic signal warrants that have to be met. Those are federal requirements. And generally speaking, because of the volumes on your side streets, so on Woodfield, it's probably never going to qualify for a traffic signal. The volumes on Middle Road almost certainly will and probably do now. But that side street's really going to be the issue, unless, of course, we start having safety issues, then that's a whole different issue.
Anyone else? And one lady, I don't know if it was Chris or Terry. Terry, which one was Terry? Is that the church one?
No, I'm the church one.
Chris was. Chris, okay. So I happened to be over there helping do some landscape stuff yesterday and witnessed a number of cars driving through the parking lot, which they do on a regular basis. It's a cut-through. One of the things I thought after being there yesterday was they should probably close off one of the entrances at some point if they could. I don't know if they can, but it is an unofficial cut-through, and that will never change. People take the shortest distance between two points a lot of times, so. Yep, I did notice that yesterday working over there, so. Yep, okay. Anyone else with regard to this matter in the audience? Back to the commission. Hey, and let me just maybe make a comment too. And I'm not going to interject my personal opinion about Dollar Trees or Dollar Stores in general, generically. But what we can't do as part of the Plan and Zone Commission is evaluate the worthiness of a business, if I say it the right way. And I'll look at legal too. And notwithstanding, as long as they meet the code requirements, in this case, I believe we're in a C3, right? This is a C3. Any business that qualifies as a C3 is entitled legally to be there. What we can do is manage that best through the site plan and landscaping and things like that. But we can't say, oh, you're a less appealing business, therefore you're not entitled to go there, when by right under the code, they're entitled to be there. So notwithstanding again what the reality might be, we don't have that latitude to consider that. So I just want to make sure that's understood by everybody out there. Yes, ma'am. I got one more in the back.
Well, I just wondered.
I got to get you over by the microphone.
Is there anybody in the Bettendorf powers that be that care about the quality of life in our community? I just feel like this is just not in keeping with what Bettendorf stands for and why we live in Bettendorf. And somebody must have some interest in the quality of our lives.
Well, I think you've got eight people sitting here that do in a monomer of people in the room. I was trying to explain that we have.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but it's frustrating.
I wanted, I wanted to understand that. It's something that's outside our ability to address. It could be the ugliest, lowest-quality business, but if they're legally allowed to be there by zoning right, we don't have a basis to say no on a zoning basis.
Is there somebody in the community that we could address this with?
Who's going to be the judge of who's a good enough business or a bad enough business for Bettendorf?
I don't know.
I don't either. That's why we've got a code that explains what type of businesses can go there. We've got code enforcement that can come over if the parking lot's a mess or if they've got things that don't comply with the code. We can manage it that way. But we don't have the ability to tell somebody, you don't have the right to be here. Yep. Okay, anybody else with regard to this matter? Okay, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-020, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve case 23-020, subject to staff recommendations. Any discussion on the motion or second?
I'll just say I feel for the lady. I kind of agree that it's not a good fit for Bettendorf. But we have to approve this in this case. We can't be choosing the businesses.
Yes, Lynn, please.
Isn't there used to be a fence, a gate between the church? I'm not a member there.
I thought there used to be a gate.
Generally concerned about the safety piece of this. Can't come out in the building. But the safety piece of it is a concern. So how do we address that?
If that's the church's property, then they can control that issue themselves.
Is the gate still there?
I don't know. I have to look and see.
And that's just a commentary.
And my only other comment relative to the landscaping comment, because of the easement that's out there, I think that's a somewhat significant constraint on the amount of landscaping that can be put on the north end. I'll call it east side of that development. So I would work with staff as best as possible to come up with the most effective landscaping that doesn't violate the terms of the easement.
I was just going to mention as well that we've seen the concern previously in other cases of cut-throughs from one business to another. And we've also seen those businesses taken into their own hands by putting up barrier blocks or, you know, like you said, gating off their entrances or whatever it may be. Veterinary clinic was the classic. That's exactly what I was thinking of. So there's definitely things that each particular, you know, owner can do that will help with that. So are we going to discuss at all what type of pylon sign is going there?
I don't know if we're going into that detail on pylon versus monument, single pole, double pole.
Just for everybody's justification, even after the site development plan is potentially approved by council, they still have to permit for the sign. The sign still has to meet our sign code, which includes various things about height, location. So while it's shown generally on the site plan now, it will still have to meet our code relative to its location, height, flashing colors, all that stuff. So there's a whole nother level of review when we actually start building things that is not really discussed at this level.
But the point I heard being made was the location, the current location of the sign may encourage people to use Woodfield versus Middle. And I think we all want people to use the Middle Road. So if it's possible to relocate the sign, and if it's necessary to change the design of the sign to do that, I think that would be in everybody's best interest.
During site development, not rezoning, right?
No, this is the site development. So we, what we're going to do is staff.
Trust you.
Yeah, is when they come in and permit for the sign, we're going to look and see if that's an optimal location. We have some setback requirements from major roads. So I'm guessing that the developer has looked at our sign ordinance and realized that the setback requirements off that major road are so far back, it's intruding into the property where he needs to put parking. So again, there's a level of review here that will occur after this.
And I think that's why the sign is where it's at.
Yeah, but if we can move it to a better spot, we're going to suggest that.
Great. All right. Any other further discussion? Janessa, you good?
Good, thanks, Greg.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion. Call for a roll call or a vote. All in favor of approving case 23-020, say aye. opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 23-020 is recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendations. All right.
I'm rolling some chairs up for this.
Thank you. Sell some tickets for them. I think some people would like to sit down. Yeah, we'll take just a minute for you guys to shuffle out and some other people shuffle in, so that's fine. After Greg does that, then we can ask. Okay, 30-second warning to find a seat. There's a seat in the front row. This is like church. Nobody wants to sit there. Raise your hand. You got a seat right over here. One seat in the front row, right up there. No electric probes on it. All right, we'll keep going now then, all right? Greg?
Mr. Chairman, the case we had before us was brought to us last month. It is 23-018. It's Middle Road and Hopewell Avenue. And it was a rezoning request being made for Hopewell Farms First Edition, applicant Ben Eastep. The requested rezoning was from A1 Agricultural Urban Reserve District to R3 Mixed Residential District. This is the area here, Hopewell Avenue here, Middle Road here. Go to the surrounding zoning. We've got A1 to the north. Parcel here is A1. Century Heights 19th is R1. Fieldstone Point right here, R1. R3 here in the Meadows. Sartain Horse Farm is A1, and then across the way here, across Middle Road, is A1 in this somewhat reserved area where there is a detention feature. Land uses, different varieties here. As you move further to the north, you have urban high intensity. And then you have urban medium intensity for half the parcel, and then urban low intensity for the eastern half. And then urban low intensity here in these residential areas. And then, as again, we get closer to the road, we see this stair stepping up in the intensities that are featured on the land use map. This is the original Hopewell Farm First Edition. The church platted this ground in 2003 with the intent of placing a church here and at one time, doing some commercial in this area. The area here that is under consideration for rezoning totals 17.67 acres. A portion of this will be eventually contained in an outlot. About 6.9 acres here and 8.92 acres for the residential area that will be a part of this zoning. Last month, this is the design that was presented. You had 62 units of townhouses, and you had this means of access into the church. This is no longer in play. That access has been removed to Middle Road. You had the diminishing by six units of the townhouses that are featured in this area. And this is what the newer concept looks like. There's also an addition of a 30-foot buffer right here to separate the R1 here over here in Century Heights 19th and Fieldstone Point down here. So this buffer has been included by the developer, and this is going to be a landscaped buffer. The intent, again, is to connect Butterfield Court, and this has always been the intent when Fieldstone Point was put in. This was not cul-de-sac, and this is where Butterfield will eventually connect up to Hopewell, and there will be another street as well connecting up to Hopewell, and then the church has its entry off of Hopewell. The amount of square footage is how the density is determined. So what you do is you look at the entirety of this parcel, or the proposed parcel, and as long as there's 3,000 feet on average per unit, that threshold is met. There's 6,938 square feet per each unit on this parcel, so they more than meet that requirement. If you look at similar zoned areas, where you have the Meadows to the south, you have 7,400 square feet per unit. If you go over and then look at Tanglewood Place, which is between Tanglewood and Tanglefoot Lane and Tanglewood Road, another windmiller project, you have approximately 4,898 square feet per unit. So that is actually a more dense development than what is featured here. Those are relevant because they are all zoned R3 and have to abide by the same requirements. In this instance, the buffer area, 30 feet provided. This is what normally would be required if this were an R4 or R5 development with building heights greater than 35 feet. Or if this was a C3 general business district zoning, which is more intense than the business district we just got reviewing, that we just got done reviewing. So the developer is offering up something that is not required under the R3 ordinance, but he is offering it up as if this property were zoned R4, R5, or C3. In looking at the elevations, those have not changed. You have two-story townhouses that will mainly be contained within the inner area. This area right here is where those will be. The one-story townhouses will be out here in this outer area. And these are the one stories, and these are pretty much the same as what you're seeing in the Meadows. The church, this is how this will look. This is the elevation of the church facing toward Middle Road. And as mentioned before, this is in the 100-year floodplain. All floodplain requirements will be required to be met, meeting with FEMA standards, federal, state, and local laws. So this is the designation of this area, and most likely it will be outlotted. The detention is right here, and this is a prior agreement that was made over two decades ago. These lots here in Century Heights 10th, 11th, and 12th Edition, this outlot was meant as a regional detention basin for all of this watershed area draining down here. a regional detention basin for all of this watershed area draining down here. So there's nothing that has changed in that period of time that is still in effect. This will give you a proximity, this is an overhead view showing the construction right now of these similar type units that were the one-story units that are undergoing, being taken right, undertaken right now in the Meadows, right here. This is the church locale right here, and you have the separation of this ravine running through the middle of the parcel, and this is the area intended to be used for the multifamily housing. Staff looked at this, and we went through an eight-point test. The provision that has changed in looking at this eight-point test is that the 30-foot buffer has been added along all single-family residence zone parcels since the last submittal. The other changes that six townhouses have been removed from the proposal, so that the density has lessened. He is meeting the density requirements. And if we look at what could go in here, you could have throughout this entire parcel, throughout the Hopewell Edition, could be zoned C1 neighborhood commercial, under the land use, as it is right now, urban low intensity. The other area could be zoned C2 community commercial, or R5 high-density, high-intensity multifamily residence district in that portion of land use on the western half. What you typically see in these instances, and it's described in the comprehensive plan, is a stair stepping down of these uses, that the different intensity uses are positioned to create a smooth transition from lower to higher intense, intensity uses. And that's what's occurring her, here. But in this instance, you're seeing residential being offered up to do that job. You're not seeing that commercial that's being offered up. With that being said, staff sees this proposal as meeting goal D, providing housing options and a chance to reinvest in existing neighborhoods, and goal G to attract young people to the area. We've gone through the eight-step process and evaluation, they meet that eight-step process. And what we would say is we recommend approval with the conditions that any preliminary plat and final plat still have to come before this body and city council. All site development plans will also, for the church and for the townhouse developments, will have to come before this body and city council. We also maintain that the future site plan must materially match the concept that we showed here that was just submitted. And then, of course, we have the provision in here that all other federal, state, and local laws have to be met. Staff interviewing this proposal would recommend approval of the proposal for the zoning going from A1 to R3. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you Greg. Mark, anything from your perspective?
If I could just, first of all, thank Greg for doing a really good job on preparing this report.
Yep.
We took the comments that were received from, from residents and from this commission, and met with the developer, and were able to get some concessions, removing six units, adding a larger buffer. I think that's worth noting, Greg did a good job of pointing it out. A couple of things you might not notice about this site when you look at it is, we have a 50-foot stream bank buffer requirement, that you have to be 50 feet outside of that stream bank, and we count that all the way up that little draw.
And that's on both sides?
Right, that's on both sides. So when you look at, if you divide, it's roughly, let's just call it 18 acres, if you divide it in half, you've got 90 on each side. They're going to be squeezed as a developer, because they got to be 50 feet off the stream by rule, and then they're going to give us 30 feet extra on the east side, so it squishes things together, and it makes it look more dense. But remember, they're giving you, they're putting the periphery to create more space based on our guidelines and in their own volition of the 30 feet. So we pushed them 50 feet off the creek, they can't build there, and then they're giving us another 30 feet on the, on the east slash west side, however you want to say that.
I just did a quick math while Greg was talking about that, and that roughly, that 30 feet times the, I'll call it the blue and the green areas there, at least it's showing up on mine, blue and green, they're both kind of green there, but I showed that it's like 1.1 acres that turned into buffer area from the previous submittal.
I trust your math, sure. And so the, the point I'm trying to make is when we, when we do these, when we put these bulk standard controls on these properties, it makes things look more squished together, and sometimes feel or look more dense, but that's by our own rule, you know, to get away from the potential externalities of the other, of the stream and, and the other neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission before I go into the public hearing?
I do.
Yes ma'am.
Greg, in this illustration that we're looking at right now, we have a, a green buffer and a turquoise buffer. What, is there a difference?
I'm just showing that the one is for Century Heights 19th, and that this one down here is intended, the way it was laid out for Fieldstone Point.
Okay, and this is not a berm, it is a buffer.
No, no.
Okay. And do we have any, has there been conversation about what's being planted and how large it will be?
We, I think, have a preference as staff for evergreens to be in place.
Okay, and so.
And we would have to work that out, that would be a site development plan detail when this comes forward to this body and to the city council.
Okay. So I would just say now, even though we're not discussing that, if this is discussed in the future, I wouldn't want to see an evergreen that comes in a gallon bucket, I would want to see an evergreen that's pretty substantial.
Or your caliper.
Because of how close these properties are. And, and the other question I wanted to ask, there's a lot of talk about this 30-foot setback, how much has that increased from what we looked at originally?
They're required to have a 25-foot setback.
Okay, so that's what we had before. And now we have a 30-foot setback.
And they're adding more landscaping.
Okay. I also am curious, you made a comment when you were talking about the setbacks, and you said another windmiller development, which gave me the impression that this is a windmiller development.
This is, this is partially being developed. These, these right here, these units
Uh huh.
are the ones that I believe Mr. Windmiller is developing, and these I believe Mr. Eastep might be developing right here.
Okay. Okay. All right, those are the only questions I have right now.
Thank you, anyone else?
Oh, I did have one more.
Yeah.
What is the, what will be the plans for, do we know at this point, on-site park, on-street parking?
It will be allowed.
It will be, okay.
Yeah, we've got better spacing on the majority of this that we've looked at, on-street parking, snow removal, that will be allowed.
All right. That's it.
What's that? I have one quick question.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, last time, there's a street that's dead-ending right now, or it's feeling like it's a dead end. Can you show us the aerial and how that comes out from the current?
Right here, I'll just use the one that is being used to show the rezoning, this, this being the most, well, it might be the most reason, but this is Griffin Lane coming in, this is Fieldstone Point, and this is Butterfield Court right here, and I'll magnify that if I can, right here. This is the area, and you can see that there is an easement, this was already drawn out here as a means of a turnaround. At the base of this, you can see that there's no connectivity here, there was not intended to be any connectivity, and I think I might be able to broaden that to right here on the land use map. You can see there's no connectivity between Century Heights 12th here and Butterfield intended. You don't see that bulb up here. That connects right up to the boundary of the lot, and there was an easement placed in here for turnaround of vehicles.
Thank you.
And the turnaround is a temporary issue until the connectivity was built in.
Yeah, if, if it was intended to be dead-ended there, they would have lost area and lost a lot and had to construct a cul-de-sac at that time.
Gotcha.
We would never put that requirement on an adjoining property that would then have to comply with that.
Okay.
Anyone else before we go to the public hearing? Nope. All right, we're going to move to the public hearing. Have we had affidavit of publication?
Yes.
Then we will open the public hearing. All right, this is Mr. Dugan.
Mr. Windlin, how are you? Glenn Dugan, 5736 Butterfield Court.
Hey, could you pull that mic up just a little bit so we get you a little better?
5736 Butterfield Court, two homes from the dead end of Butterfield, and two homes from the south border of the property we're talking about tonight. Thanks for the opportunity to be back with you, round two. So we've reviewed the development proposal, and it's slight, slight revision from the original one presented in the March 15th meeting. But I think it's also important to review our previous conversation from that meeting as well. And in short, the residents of the surrounding properties have stated their opposition to the devaluing of their high-end properties and homes, citing the drastic mismatch of the existing R1 neighborhoods and the proposed R3 one here. We stated the disparity between the existing homes and the proposed ones, and the incohesiveness that will discourage home shoppers looking for homes like ours. We stated that the residents are not trying to block a rezoning, but are pleading for one that is appropriate, because what is proposed, in our view, is not. So the city put forth five points that they felt would help justify the planned rezoning, and the residents put forth counters to each of them, finding them to be baseless. So point one was the idea that R3 is already being developed just west of Butterfield, the Meadows. So what was the harm in developing R3 just to the north? The residents stated that the development to the west was not the same neighborhood. It was divided by a ravine and woods, and it cannot be seen from Butterfield when the vegetation is in bloom, and there's no direct way to get from one to the other. The proposal to the north, however, is the same neighborhood, right next door, on the same street. And there's no comparison, so that makes this point baseless. Point two is the idea that the original planning of this territory in northeast Bettendorf was always expected and zoned to be max R3, so the original plan was being maintained. The residents countered with the fact that much has changed in the last 20, 25 years. High-end, single-family home neighborhoods have been developed over and over, filling this territory north of 53rd all the way to Hopewell, and still proceeding east all the way to Chriswell. This didn't just happen by accident, squatters didn't come in and claim land and begin building their homes. No, the city approved this, starting with your board, perhaps not you personally, but maybe your predecessors, and ending with approval from the city council. This was part of your plan. This max R3 territory that the city refers to was continuously zoned R1 over and over, R1, R1 going north and east, and this plan continues to unfold to this day. No one speaking for the city will convince anyone in this room that the original master plan was to expand this quadrant of Bettendorf with upscale, high-end R1 homes and properties, only to plop a high-density cluster of low-priced homes in the middle of it, where a leftover, undeveloped piece of land remained. That's not a plan. Having said that, when the city makes reference to the original plan, quite frankly, that doesn't hold a lot of meaning anymore. The plan has evolved significantly, and it can be directed any way you want to. So we see this point as also being baseless. Point three was the idea that the dead end on the north end of Butterfield was always meant to extend north, again, by the original plan, which mentioned just a few moments ago. I think we've covered the lack of significance to the original plan, since so much has changed in the last 20, 25 years. Heck, 20 years ago, there was no Fieldstone Point. Butterfield Court, Griffin Lane, or Hopewell Court, it was all farmland. And R1 development has been allowed to work its way north, only to surround this plot of land we're talking about tonight, and we find that point baseless as well. So point four was the idea regarding a rezoning to R1, and that it wouldn't be desirable for R1 development to reach all the way to Hopewell. Well, the problem with this idea is that R1 already does. All the way along Hopewell going west to Dallas Glen, and also going east to Chriswell, R1 everywhere on Hopewell, another baseless point. And the same could be said for Forest Grove, an equally busy road. And finally, point five was the idea that additional emergency service access was needed by continuing Butterfield north to Hopewell. The residents showed that an existing route via Remington took only 40 seconds longer than a route through the proposed new development. An additional time study has since been shown that emergency services would only take 20 seconds longer by coming up the original path from 53rd to Berkshire, Remington, and Griffin. 20 seconds is all we're talking about. We believe that makes this point baseless as well. So that's a review of the city's position versus the residents' position from our last meeting. Now, since that meeting, various conversations have taken place between concerned residents and city officials, where the city has expressed some additional points to attempt to justify this proposal. Let's call the next one position number six. This is the idea that it was always, always intended for Fieldstone Point to be continued north, as was mentioned also a few moments ago. Apparently, a 20-year pause can keep a plan as fresh as the day it was created, but regardless, the residents would say fantastic. But let's continue Fieldstone Point the way Fieldstone Point is today. High-end, single-family homes, which would be R1. How could Fieldstone Point be continued if there's a great departure from the Fieldstone Point properties? That's not Fieldstone Point. This position from the city really contradicts itself. So a study has been done on the average property assessed values of the residents surrounding this plot of A1 land. The homes on Griffin have an average assessed value of over $560,000 and a 2,600 average square footage. For Butterfield Court, the average is $650,000 with 2,800 square feet, and for Hopewell, the averages are over $615,000 with 3,100 square feet, and the high end of the Hopewell Court range is over $800,000. And we know that homes frequently sell for more than their assessed value, so the point being, these are big numbers. Squishing $200,000 homes in the midst of these simply does not make sense to anyone, except maybe the developer, whose driving motive is profit. The current R1 density is about half acre per home. The proposed R3 density in the middle portion of this development is about 1/14th of an acre per home. 30 homes jammed into just over two acres. Seven times the density of Fieldstone Point. And that's the reduced plan. This is not the way to continue Fieldstone Point, or butt up against Century Heights 19th Edition. We tell people from other parts of the area this story, and they, and they just shake their heads. They wonder who's in charge in this town. The next point, and the last one for now, we'll call point seven, is the idea that the city wants to make more affordable housing available for young people. And the residents say fantastic, wonderful idea. Just do it in the right place. Smashing these higher-density, lower-priced homes among 600,000 to 800,000 dollar homes is not the place. There are numerous plots of land in this city where nice, affordable housing can be developed and not detrimentally affect existing higher-end properties. If you need some suggestions, we have plenty, we have a list if you'd like it. Sparing this specific plot of high-density, lower-priced development does not in any way keep the city from providing all the homes that young people could want. In fact, the developer admitted there were numerous land opportunities nearby that were targeted for R3 development, but they couldn't turn a profit if they paid the asking price. So it seems that the church is selling their land for less than the market rate. Special deal. One that's out of our control, of course. Let's find a developer who'll be willing to go ahead with a rightful R1 extension of Fieldstone Point. All the surrounding residents would be happy with this, the city would be supported with a plan that makes sense to everyone. We residents sense that profits are the driving force here. Things that far outweigh other significant factors that would be addressed by city leaders who would care about their residents. So in review, this territory is the premier quadrant of our premier city. This is where people have come to build their high-end homes, and this is still where people who want a high-end home come to look. This is where we chose to live, in neighborhoods that reflect this kind of quality and value. And it's still expanding along Hopewell, all the way east to Chriswell, and now busting out north of Hopewell. The city has promoted this, and it's clear this is still the plan. Stuffing high-density, lower-priced homes in the nooks and crannies in amongst our high-end homes is not a legitimate plan. It's a hodgepodge, improvised, and terribly random way to cram as much stuff into every square foot of available land as possible. Everyone sees it, and it's very disturbing. Everyone sees it, and it's very disturbing. Again, it's about money. The city has made every attempt to promote this idea with points that simply just don't hold water, as we've shown. It seems the first proposal wins the day. We urge the board to give another proposal consideration, one that makes much more sense, protects the value that residents are trying to hold on to, and one that continues to enhance the value of this northeast quadrant of Bettendorf in the historic tradition that has brought many high-end, tax-paying residents to this town. Again, we are not trying to prevent a rezoning of this land. We are asking you to please consider rezoning this tract to R1, single-family homes instead. Please, give this alternative proposal your highest consideration. Please. Thanks for the time.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
My name's John Huffman. I live at 5575 Berkshire Street. And I just want to start off by saying that I had to take my watch off because my heart monitor kept going off. But I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. But, you know, on April 14th, I sent an email to our mayor, to council member Nick Bozinski, council member-at-large Frank Baden, director of community development Mark Hunt, and city administrator Decker Plain, outlining my concerns for the rezoning and development of this parcel. And I haven't heard anything back from them to date. And so I'm trying to figure out, how do you get this on the agenda if you won't respond to residents before you move forward? I mean, don't you think I deserve some kind of answers to my emails? Then I want to present one of my concerns, my primary concern. So if the gentleman, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, was running the PowerPoint, if you would go to the slide where you talked about the catch basin just north of 53rd at Ginger Creek. I'd like to talk about that in a minute. So you'll have to help me out with your speech, but I thought I heard you say that, hey, the catch basin just north of 53rd Avenue has always been the storm-water plan, management plan, since, and help me if you said 1993, 2001, or whatever date you said that was.
The area designated as an outlot, and this is arranged with Mel Foster at the time, this area contains three different subdivisions.
Hey Greg, can I just pause for a second?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to get through the meeting, if they want to ask questions, I would recommend the commission write those questions down. If you want staff to answer them, we'll answer them, but I think we need to get through the presentations. Otherwise, we're going to be presenting, questioning, presenting, questioning.
Back and forth. All right, that's a good suggestion. So let's capture the question.
Okay. I'll tell you something. I sent questions in an email on April 14th, and you didn't respond to them. So you want me to write questions out to you again? The same questions out to you again?
No, no.
So I'll move forward. I respect for the commission.
We want to capture your question now, and we'll respond tonight, rather than go back and forth, back and forth here. We're going to capture the question and address all the questions tonight, so we're not putting you off.
And I'm sorry that I've come across as aggressive, but I'm frustrated with how I was treated, and so I'm responding in that manner. So let me go to this slide. So we got this catch basin that's just north of 53rd Avenue. Now, I live on Berkshire, which is north of that, on Ginger Creek, and maybe the gentleman could point out where that's at, but you can see where Berkshire goes up and turns and heads to the east and becomes 56th Avenue Court. And to say that the stormwater plan for that creek is at the base of where you're talking about, 53rd Avenue, doesn't do anything for stormwater that comes from the north of me down into my property. Here's what I would say. Let's just pretend that that basin area you're talking about is Louisiana, and that Ginger Creek is the Mississippi River. Then Bettendorf shouldn't even worry about a flood plant, Mississippi River flood plant, because let Louisiana do it. Let Louisiana take care of it way downstream. The catch basin needs to occur in the property that you're trying to develop right now. I requested the study, data from a study, on how to manage the amount of runoff that would occur at that property for the 100-year flood and the 500-year flood. If you remember, 1993, Bettendorf suffered a 100-year rainfall and a 500-year rainfall, and Duck Creek flooded, and it damaged many homes, and it cost the city money. And Decker Plain could be here to answer that, too, but it was mismanagement. It also reminds me of in 2022 that the city approved some zoning and development of property by Slavens Manor. And so the stormwater management plan was to put a berm in to make sure that when a heavy rain came, all that mud wouldn't wash down into the residence of Slavens Manor, which happened. And so the city's answer is, well, you know what? The contractor didn't complete the berm the way we had intended. So who owns that damage? Well, the city, if they tell a contractor, you build a berm to protect those residents, the city should manage that construction and maintenance of that berm until it's no longer needed or completed. So anyway, we've been told that, hey, you don't have to worry about what happens with the rainfall because downstream from you is a catch basin, and it's going to take care of it. And we know that that's not true. You have to know that's not true. Then if we went back to one of the other slides that the gentleman was showing, that whenever that was laid out, that that was a basin, all that property north, the property that we're talking about now, and the property north of Hopewell Avenue, was agricultural ground. And so I'm not a hydrologist, so I can't speak to how much water is absorbed by farmland as opposed to how much water is absorbed by concrete and buildings, but I know it's a big difference. And so the runoff is going to increase in Ginger Creek, and I'd like that, I'd like you to consider that before you move forward with this plan. I'm telling you, the plan can't move forward without some kind of study and documentation that you'll know how you're going to handle the water that goes into Ginger Creek that flows right through my backyard and could flood my property, so all this damage to my My criticism in the email that I expressed was, the only people that receive notification about the rezoning of this property are people who live within 400 feet of that property. I don't live within 400 feet of that property. I live further away than that. But what I do, where I do live, is I'm affected by Ginger Creek. Ginger Creek is fed by water runoff from that property that comes down to my house. And so the only way I found out that this was going on is, a neighbor happened to tell me, hey, John, have you heard what they're getting ready to do at 519 Hopewell Court? And that's wrong. That's short-sighted, that you wouldn't think that. That water doesn't just affect me, it's everybody downstream. And they should have been notified that, hey, we're moving forward with a plan that does not include adding retention ponds and an effective stormwater management plan. And if I'm wrong, where is the data that I requested? So do not move forward, please do not move forward, and put the city at liability for the damage that will result if we don't have a proper stormwater management plan, and we don't implement it, and we don't monitor it. Lastly, I want to speak on behalf of Tony Clifton, who can't be here tonight. He's out of town. And he spoke with Decker Plain and Mark Hunt, and told them, hey, we didn't know this meeting was going to occur on the 19th. We made plans to be out of town. I can't be there. I'd like an opportunity to log in remotely and make my presentation about my concerns for this development and this rezoning. And in his words, he was told that Decker Plain and Mark Hunt told him, we do not have to allow people who aren't present at the meeting to present by law. We don't have to do that. And then Tony recalled that at the March 15th meeting of this board, that a person from Axiom was allowed to log in remotely and make a presentation about this development. So the developer, contractor, whatever that position is, they were afforded the opportunity to speak to everyone remotely when a citizen of Bettendorf wasn't. That can't be right. I mean, I know you've got to know that's not right. It's not just, and it's not how, it's not the community that I chose to move to over 30 years ago. This process has been flawed from the beginning. It feels like there's a rush to serve the best interests of the developer. There's only one option, and that is stop. Don't even discuss this any further until you're prepared to answer the specific concerns of the residents. And specifically, I'm talking about, I want to see a stormwater plan, action plan, based on the study and the criteria. One last thing I want to talk about. You were talking about, one of the gentlemen was saying, hey, we look at the size of the property, and then we can determine how many homes can be built there based on, say, nine acres and 3,000 square foot for the house. Well, how do you know what available land is, what land's available until you determine whether or not you have to put a retention pond there? So the retention pond or the stormwater developmental plan may eat up some of that property, and we don't know that, so we can't move forward. I want to thank you for your time, and I just would encourage you to please take action to treat the residents of this city like you would treat a developer when it comes to being able to make their case at one of these hearings. And then, please, respect the residents of this city. When we send in an email, respond, at least respond to the email. I don't, you could have told me I was wrong, and then showed me why, and that would be fine. But to not respond is a crime. And I don't want you to move forward. I don't want you to put a fiscal liability on the residents of this city and me, the taxpayer. You're messing with the taxpayer's money. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. So from caption, from the comments, we'll have a response back regarding the stormwater issue, and I think also we should address the question or note you made about speaking remotely. So we'll put that on our response list or question to address. Okay, who's next?
My name's Neil Griffith. I've been in Bettendorf since 1974, so I do date a lot of people in this room. I did move to Bettendorf to raise a family, which I did. Built three homes, one by Schaefer from Mel Foster, one by Tim Dolan Development, and one by Windmiller. And I always wanted to live in the town because it was family-oriented, you could raise a family, you had amenities, you knew your neighbors, you had a good police force, and you had a good schools. As you start intensifying these developments, you're going to get a certain amount of people that may not look at Bettendorf the way I have. You got a development going down on Devil's Glen Road by Duck Creek Apartments. You come up Devil's Glen, you go up behind Fairway, you got apartments up there, no problem with that. You go to Tanglefoot, you look down the road, you got all those condos up there. You go across from Lawns Unlimited, you got some more condos going in up there. You go further up Devil's Glen Road, you end up in front of the power station, you got some more condos going in. You turn on right on 53rd Street, you got Springs Apartments, then you got some more condos back in there, then you go to the Summit. Then you come back to Devil's Glen Road, you go up Devil's Glen Road, you got some more places. You got, you have high-density places where people can live. What I'm saying here was that in '05, when I purchased the property and built my house by Windmiller, I was told it was going to be a church. I planned on dying in that place. Now you're going to put in a high density. I'm not against promoting additions that are compatible with what's around there. This is not compatible. I want to bring up, because Reverend's here now, I talked to the pastor, and he assured me that if he had to do it over again, he would change some things. He said if it does come back to him because the developer backs out of the plan, he would look at R1 with some light R2 in that development. I took him at his word because he's a man of the cloth. I said, I don't think you'd have a problem with our neighborhood if you'd done something like that. But 58, 60 units in that small area is too dense for what we built for. What we were told was going to be there. Changes are made, I know that, but the city has to keep their word, just like my dad told me years ago. The only thing you've got complete control of is your word. If you can't be good at your word, what the hell can you be good at? You got a place down there on Miller Road, some of the construction people refer to that as a circus. I ended up putting McNamara's name in front of it and called it McNamara Circus. You got people, postal people come in, they say they got to be careful where they deliver their mail because people come in and out of there all the time. They don't know from one month to another who's living there. If this is what you want to develop in Bettendorf, you're going to start losing residents because they're not going to stay here in this community when you put units like this up. You want to take this down, do something good for the residents, move it down to 30 units, put something in there like side-by-side condos. You know, I call them duplexes, my day. But those are things that we could live with, but this is just too high-dense. Then I turn around and take a look at the builder. Does he live in Bettendorf? Does he live in Scott County? No. He comes in, finds a location, puts as much as he can, gets some money out of it, puts in his back pocket and shares it with his people at the end of the year, at the taxpayer's expense. So I want you to take a look at all issues here. Take a look at all the different programs we have, and see if you make the right decision. And let your conscience be your guide. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm from, lead pastor from Hope Church. We own the land, and, you know, designing it rezoned for R3. And I think where we come from in this whole thing, this whole process, is we had a developer come to us last fall wanting to redo the back of the land. As you can see with the, whatever that's called in the middle, the ravine, we can't build on both sides of it. And so it makes perfect sense for us to sell the back half of the land. Just as a side note, about three years ago, when there was no pastor there, when they were between pastors, the church almost merged with another church, and if that would have happened, that was a few votes within happening, or from coming to happen, if that would have happened, that land would have been sold for commercial property. And then whatever, things like the family dollars and the gas stations are going other corners, well, that was really close, and so that didn't happen. So when I got there a couple of years ago, we started having a discussion about selling the back half for residential use, because obviously, you want to make sure something quality is put in there. There's a lot of pros and cons from my part. I live right across the street in Haley Heights. I'm not far from there at all. I live right across from the cornfield off of Hopewell, and my wife and I are fully aware someday in that cornfield, right across the street from us, where our yard backs into Hopewell, there's going to be something going in there as well. And I understand all the concerns, and he's correct, the gentleman just spoke, that I did say, if we had someone come and offer us an offer for R1 property or R2, we would have been fine with that. We weren't necessarily, you know, wondering if it should be R1, R2, or R3. The fact of the matter is, the developer that came in, came in and offered us an acceptable price, it was not under-market, it was very marketable price, especially for R3, and offered us that, and from this day forward, I look at the pictures, I have a different opinion, but I don't live right butt-up to it, so I understand that. But I am thankful that if this does get approved, I understand R3 is acceptable, that there is the trees all the way across, and as a church, it doesn't, the church vote, it doesn't bother us at all to have these houses. The gentleman who came with me was from our church, and he expressed, too, when he was looking for homes last year, it's very hard for young professionals to find homes that don't cost over $600,000 in Bettendorf, and that are newer, anyway. And so that's one of the reasons why you mentioned, while, I'm not saying, you know, obviously I may not like it built here, but that's one of the reasons why all these homes are being built in Bettendorf, because more and more people are moving here. And, but anyway, we as a church, and I have a problem with it, but we also appreciate the concerns of our neighbors, we also appreciate the stormwater concerns, which our engineer's been working with the city, both on both ends. And so I just want to say that we are obviously for it. We sold the land, and however, it's true, if someone had come forth with wanting to purchase for R1, we would have been fine with that, too, but that's where we sit. We have a contract with CT Creek, and we feel what they've developed is, it's a lot, and it may or may not be in the best place, but it is according to the city planning. So that's where we stand with the whole thing, at least maybe. So that's where we stand with the whole thing, at least maybe not the entire church, but we did vote to, to approve this sale, so.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Who's next? Yes, sir.
Tim Cernan, 5213 Hopewell Court. I do have a question. My neighbors did some of that emails. Did the council receive those?
Which, which was the name?
So, so for some of my, my neighbors, it would have been, excuse me. It's going to be Wendy and Tony Clifton. They would have sent an email.
Yes.
So has everyone reviewed that? Okay, so I don't need to read that. And then Jim Walsh also sent a letter. Okay, as a follow-up. And so just, they spoke on this before, but the concern was my neighbors did, did reach out. And with Axiom able to speak, they should have had the same right to speak via Zoom, being out of town for this meeting. When we give an opportunity, it, it should be equal both ways. And I, I would hope that you would take that into consideration. If this gets tabled again, where they could actually speak on, on their behalf, because it's hard for me to put in, into their words on their feelings on things. But I did want to cover a few things. On, our backyard will go match up to the, the area, the green area. And it went from 25 feet to 30 feet. And again, it's just planting trees, it's not a berm. And that would be something that, again, when we build our, we didn't build our home, but when we bought our home, that was one of the things, it's just like you have the view of that. And so area, and so I really don't want to have that in our backyard with only five more feet. And I think that needs to be in consideration. The other thing too, living on this for a long timeframe, the school buses actually travel down this, even when Forest Grove was open, when the roundabout, before they're building the roundabout. So they would go that way to go to the junior high school. So you're going to have, putting this development in, you're going to actually have more residents in this area with the school buses and things like that. It just causes more traffic than anything else. I'm also concerned with the on-street parking, that the, the folks that would have. And we talk about housing, you know, that, that word got brought up. It's hard to find a 200 to 250,000 dollar house. These aren't homes. I mean, these, these are county, town homes. I mean, it's not a residential home. And so I, I look at it as, as an R1 area with the, with the neighborhood. The, the average lot size is 56 acres. The average assessed value is 615 for Hopewell. And, and again, our tax, our, our property taxes are going to go up 17, it was 16.4% or 17.4%, I can't remember the exact number, I calculated it the other day. But by doing this, it's going to take away from the, the values of our homes that some of my other neighbors have, have talked about. Abnormal heart rate, so, you know, mine's going off too. So, so I'm with you, the gentleman in the blue, so I probably should have took my, took my watch off. You know, because we're, we're all passionate, we, we want growth. I mean, for what I do, I, I want more people moving to Bettendorf. I want affordable housing, I want all those things. I, I think there's places for that as well. There, there are open areas that could go. And again, it comes down to profit for, for the builders. And the thing is, I mean, our property being off five more feet doesn't, doesn't really make sense. And to plant some trees, and so is the church or the development going to come rake my yard after the fact and things like that? I mean, berm would, 30-foot berm would probably be a better, a better solution, so I wouldn't have that. But then my other concern is with the stormwater. As you look to the north, and there, there will be further development. And you will have more runoff coming, coming through and down south. And so for the neighbor to the south on, on retention ponds and things like that, because we did have that massive rain. And I don't know what damage or if any neighbors down south had any water in their basements or anything like that. But that, that is a concern, and I think there needs to be a study done before, before we move forward. Because you put that much concrete and development in, there is, I mean, you got 50 foot off the ravine. I don't know if that's going to take care of it, and that's something that needs to be put into consideration as well. The, on the Butterfield lots, because the driveway is going to go through, and you have, the assessed value is 646 on those going right into a 250. It, it is going to dramatically affect their home values. I mean, because you're, even though you're going to have some trees right there, it, it still has an effect on folks that have been there for a very long time and has impact. The other R3 development, it was more like an R2. And so it's not a two-story for the ones or from, where would it be? Be south and on the south side of the current development south. And so that would be another consideration. But we're not against having the church there. I mean, the neighbors, I mean, we all knew the church was going to come. And then we, we get the statements tonight, I mean, because anything can ever change. Well, it could be his own commercial, or you could have a dollar store. And I'm like, really? I mean, there, there's some, some realities of things. I'm sure the commissioner would look at that going, yeah, we're probably not going to put that in where there's a 600, 700,000 dollar home values at. But we're, we're receptive to the church. The disappointing thing is we're neighbors. I mean, and that's, that's what I think about Bettendorf. And, and really, I'm disappointed in, in where Axiom or the developer or even the church comes and talks to the neighbors going, hey, we want to be a good neighbor to you. We want you to feel comfortable with this development. I get everybody is in business to make money, to, to grow, things like that. But I think we just, we've, we've lost that side of it, where it would have been nice to get a letter from the church going, hey, we'd like to meet with you, just like to hear your concerns. And then maybe something better could have came from this whole thing. But it didn't. And then disappointed in really Axiom last, at the last meeting, having the, the chance to, to talk and then not letting my neighbors who are just as passionate in the letters that they have written side of it to, to speak tonight. And so I hope there would be some consideration on that, where they would have the opportunity or looking further ahead. When you open something up, that it needs to be equal for all. And so I would, I would challenge that. And then my last thing is, if you, if you, if you would table this and give them the opportunity, or at least consider not being an R3, but an R1 and having the development. We would love to have neighbors, we really would. We would like to have the church in our area. There's another church that's going to be on, on Hopewell and Chriswell. So we'll have two churches in the neighborhood, that's a good thing. Might help all of our souls. So those are the things that I'm, I'm thinking about. But we're not, we're not here to say we don't want development. We just, we want, we're hoping for R1 and, and having good neighbors and not having all this and being concerned with traffic. Because it is, it is a shortcut path. Because with the, with the school on, on Forest Grove, people do bypass that because it is a 35 mile an hour speed limit on, on Hopewell. So they do bypass that to hit Chriswell, to get back onto Forest, to head out. And so I think that needs to be in consideration with the traffic. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you would consider tabling this or going for an R1.
Thank you. Chris, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just, I do want to thank you, thank everybody for your comments. And thank you, sir, for yours and, and for bringing up Ms. Clifton's issue. And I do want to assure you and her and anybody else that, that we do want to hear from, from everybody. That's, that's what, what we're all here for, we, we want to hear from you. There were some different rules under COVID where some of the Chapter 21 open meetings rules were, were changed and where there were different ways to communicate when we were all at home. And so those rules have been lifted. I don't know exactly when it was that Axiom spoke. There are issues with remote access and public comments. There are Zoom bomb situations, there are just different issues that we aren't fully prepared to handle. Maybe we will in the future, we're going to be looking at that. And I believe that the legislature will look at that as well. But there are things that we're just not fully ready for open comment. And if you open it up to, to one individual, then we would need to open it up to everybody. Again, I'm not, we, we might have made a mistake with Axiom. I'm not sure when that happened, I have a feeling it was under the COVID rules. But I, I do, I just want to be clear that we aren't trying to shut anybody out. We, we just want, we, we do want to hear from everybody.
With the Axiom, it was at the last meeting.
Was it the last meeting?
And it was on the, on the second go-round. So it wasn't, it wasn't part of COVID. So then it would have been a fair, a fair thing for them, at least the Clifton's and, and Jim, to be able to voice their concerns tonight.
The issue just with the public comment as opposed to an applicant is that we, we would, we just, we, we're not fully set up to just open it up and to give the, the number out to everybody. But we will read Ms. Clifton's email just so that her, to, to try to do the best we can. We're trying to do the best we can. This is not an easy thing for, for, it's, we, we are doing our best and we're trying to accommodate everybody.
And just a question, you can get back to me on this one. On the, on the minutes, were there letters put in the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah, every, every public, every written correspondence is part of the record, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Could we also talk about, it's not in our purview tonight, to make a change to R1, how that process works? Several people have said we should make that decision. Maybe that comes later.
We will, we will do that, I think after the end of the public hearing, we can do that.
Now may the time to read the. Yeah, I'll read that at the end of that, sir. All right, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Hopefully I'll be the last one. My name's Jeff Haynes, I work, I live at 2015 Edgewood Drive in Bettendorf. I'm a member of the church and I'm also a member of the, of the board of the church. And just to kind of answer a few questions to the gentleman that was discussing the water retention. I may not know everything, but it's my understanding from our discussions that there are at least one, if not two, retention ponds built on the property. So hopefully that's going to, okay, all right.
Is that true?
I, I guess that I honestly, I don't know.
I don't think we should talk about, something's happening.
Sir, we will get to that. I will answer all your stormwater questions, but we're going to get through the full public comment, okay?
But I don't think we should allow people to say things that aren't factual.
Well, I don't necessarily know if everything you're saying or anything else, anybody is saying. I was not on your email, sir.
They didn't share it with you?
Did, I did not get your email.
We're going to, we're going to file the process.
Right, like I said, if I was, if I'm wrong, then that's, that's my bad. But I just want to speak in favor of this. You know, we, you know, we, the church, the developers, we have the best intentions when we entered this, this process. And if anybody's ever been out there, you know that the back half of the property has quite an elevation change and it just made it incompatible or impossible for us to do anything with it. So that's why we made the decision to sell the, sell that part of the property in the first place. And the developer that we're in discussions with, they approached us. So it wasn't anything that we solicited. So we went into this with the best of intentions. And I know that the developer has made some changes to try and accommodate everybody's, everybody's concerns and issues. And quite honestly, you're never going to make anybody or everybody happy about everything. So I think we just have to take, take into consideration, you know, what we have before us and, and move forward with, with the information that we know and, and make the best decision that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Hueskamp Collins. I live at 5620 Butterfield Court. So my neighbors went before me and, and said pretty much what, what I'm going to echo. I'm a Bettendorf business owner and my husband and I very intentionally moved to Butterfield Court in 2021 because I look at, I'm a licensed financial professional and my home is my investment, just as much as my investment portfolio. And I am proud to be in Bettendorf, proud to live in Butterfield Court and live where I live. And I am very discouraged that, as my neighbors have said, it's possible that, and very probable, that my assessments are going to go down because of the neighbors coming in that are going to be R3. I would hope that, you know, I, I know that it was just said that it's not in the purview tonight to decide, you know, how it will be zoned. But I just hope, I, I was never naive enough to think that agricultural was not going to be rezoned into something. But I hope that, that the committee will keep in mind that to ensure that the neighbors' value in their homes are upheld, that they'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to clarify, when I said earlier about the R1, I said we would have been willing if there had been an offer for, for R1 for the property, but that, that did not happen. So we are under contract with CT Creek for an R3 property. If that gets, so, so we're not personally asking for the, the zoning to be changed to an R1. I just said we would have been willing, if someone had bought it that way, it wouldn't have bought, you know, it would have been fine. And, but unfortunately, we are offered from a company that wanted to build an R3. So that is, that's why we're submitting an R3 application, if that makes sense.
Yep, thank you.
The city of Bettendorf, on their website, has a stormwater management plan and it, and it's laid out. And I just, I find it, it frustrates me that when a presentation like this goes up, that looking at that property and the development of that property isn't filtered through how you lay out your stormwater management plan on the website in Bettendorf. And so whoever manages that should have looked at this and been able to speak to that tonight.
Give us a minute, and we, once we get through the presentations, Brent, the city engineer over here, is going to take that, so.
I, I hear you. But do you see how, I had to ask that question here. I asked it in an email, didn't get an answer. Can you see I had to ask that question here when it should be part of the presentation? It should be educating the citizens on how you plan to protect them from having their homes flooded and damaged. That should be part of, hey, before this goes anywhere, here's what we've decided, how this property is going to develop to fit into the stormwater development plan that's mandated by Bettendorf. And I'm sure the catalyst of that was the flooding of Duck Creek, the mismanagement of Duck Creek and watershed at that point, 1993. And I just don't want us to regress back to pre-1993 issues. Residents shouldn't have to ask questions regarding development property to protect their interest. That's the city's responsibility, to serve and protect.
I think you're going to see that the city does do that. And if you give us a chance to answer the question and he can explain the process, you will see that it's not arbitrary at all, but it's well planned out. And once the final development is designed, which this is not, this is conceptual, once the final design is developed, then that will all flow through, pun intended, the city engineer for the water calculation. So we'll, we'll take that. And if we still got questions after he's presented his, then we'll, we'll come back to that. But give him a chance to say what he's got, so it'll, I think, address what you're concerned about.
All right, thank you. I would appreciate the conceptualization early in the process rather than now.
Noted. Okay, who's next? Yes, sir.
Hi there, I'm Rob Davis with CT Creek Development. And despite popular opinion, we are not the devil incarnate trying to ruin everyone's life here, right?
We've got a pastor here if you need it, though.
Thank you, we do, and we appreciate that. Thank you, Pastor Craig. Really, you know, we did, we did listen to the people last time in, in our two meetings, right? We had a good neighbor meeting, then we We had a good neighbor meeting, then we sat here last month. And to the extent that we're available and still make the project viable financially, we did reduce, right? We reduced by six units, which I know doesn't sound like a lot if you're the neighbor. But from the developer standpoint, and yes, it is about dollars and cents and it's a business, six units is a pretty significant chunk to take out of that development. So we, we reduced that. You know, as we looked at this and it wasn't, again, it's not, let's look at this and try to figure out where we can go in small stuff, smaller homes adjacent to large homes. It's really just where does it fit within the city's plan? And so as we looked at that and, you know, evaluating the ULI, the UMI on this lot, we are, we're less than a third of what we could put here. You know, 56 units with over 150 units possible. I know, again, it doesn't sound like it, but we are being cognizant of the neighbors around us. So I think when we, you know, we've heard it earlier tonight, but you know, as we look at the allowable uses that are possible here, we're not trying to put in a C store, gas station, or something like that, which I think arguably probably would have a greater impact on your property values than perhaps three, four, $500,000 townhomes do. So again, we increased that rear yard buffer. That was, that was requested. I don't think, we're not really trying to do anything that isn't allowable per the city of Bettendorf regulations. We're just asking for your consideration and we do thank Greg and the city staff for your, for your evaluation. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Who's next? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Brian Belk, Axiom Consultants. I am here in person. I did not ask for preferential treatment for that call in last meeting, so I apologize if caused a stir there. But yeah, I just want to thank everybody for their time. Really want to emphasize the fact that we're here for rezoning and rezoning purposes and not site plan and details that are involved in the site plan. That will come to you at a later time, which some of the items that have been brought up today are. But as, as others have noted and Rob just noted, in terms of the rezoning, as staff report has noted, we fall within the land use plan and the comp plan and in fact, go above and beyond that even with the conceptual plan in terms of a buffer on the east and south, the landscaping, the number of units and the density. It's not a high density. It really is not. And so I think, you know, I just want to make sure that we're emphasizing why we are here and what we're here for. I do want to also say that it's not abnormal to have a transition from single family to townhomes such as this. And if you go just straight to the south with those meadows, Christie Lane and Red Fox Road do the exact same thing, where they go from single family to the exact same townhomes that are proposed here. So yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Who's next? Nobody? Go ahead.
We understand what's allowable. That doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. Yeah, there was transition from R1 to R3. That doesn't mean those people like that either. So many of those people complained about that development two years ago when it came up in this room. So I understand what's allowable. You can put the Empire State Building there if the code permits it, but that doesn't mean it's the right thing to do for Bettendorf. Just want to make sure we, we're clear on allowable and reasonable.
All right, thank you. Last call before I read the epistle. It's a long one, so you're gonna have to bear with me. Okay, this is the email from the Clifton's that they had asked that we specifically asked that we read so that it's verbally entered into the record. So bear with me as I read through this. It's pretty long. So this letter and attachments were sent earlier this week, earlier in the week to Alderman Pelzinski, Pelzinski, and the city council, as well as Greg Beck, Beck, and Mark Hunt. We are submitting this email address as well. Per letter dated 4/11/2023, it will be ready, read into the record at the meeting. To ensure that the letter and its context are included in the minutes, it should be read, read aloud, out loud in its entirety, including attachments. I'm gonna do a little editing so it reads right. Wendy and Tony Clifton, to all Bettendorf Iowa City Council members, Aldermen, if you could please share it with Planning and Zoning Board members, as I do not have their email addresses and was not able to locate them on the Bettendorf website. Good afternoon, Aldermen. Thank you for talking with me this week regarding our concerns relating to the proposed rezoning of parcel 841109101, which is case 23-018, 5019 Hopewell Avenue, A1 Agricultural Urban Reserve District to R3 Mixed Residential District. This is the proposed condominium development behind Hope Church Site, proposed rezoning of parcel 841109101. Amongst other concerns previously shared by myself and others, this condominium subdivision will diminish the value of all homes, properties surrounding this condominium subdivision. I have attached my original objections to the condominium subdivision and would like them again included in the April 19, 2023 Planning and Zone Board Record. I would like added to that record the additional issues below. I have reviewed the new proposal in the packet released on 4/14/23 and do not see much change to the original proposal. The proposed homes are significantly lower in caliber and value than the surrounding homes, thus reducing the value of current residence homes. Using our home at 5323 Hopewell Court as an example, our home was appraised in February of 2022 for $800,000. Further, a recent homeowner's insurance policy has valued the replacement cost to rebuild our home at over $900,000. And the current assessed value of our home is $668,400. Our home is not unique. The home next to mine, 5275 Hopewell Court, was purchased in 2020 for nearly $800,000 and had a significant addition, was added, increasing the value of the home further. In reviewing all homes on Hopewell Court, Griffin Lane, and Butterfield Court, all streets have at least one home that touches this new subdivision. The averages are as follows. Hopewell Court average, average lot size, .56 acres, 3143 square foot house, average assessed 16, 615,660. Griffin Lane, average lot size, .45 acres, average lot or average house square footage, 2577, average assessed value 562,678. Butterfield Court, average lot size, .56 acres, average home square footage, 2791, average assessed value 646. Just looking at it from a size and value standpoint, the proposed units will come nowhere near the above stated average square footage and average assessed values. Thus, the building of this condominium subdivision at the proposed location would significantly impact negatively the value of the surrounding homes. I think it was said best by Jim Walsh in his letter to Mark Hunt on 3/13/23. Quote, "The developer won't mention, what the developer won't mention is that parcel 841109101 sits in the corner of Middle Road and Hopewell Avenue, which is within a half a mile of five other vacant lots for sale that are already appropriately zoned and more appropriately sized to accept the development like the one proposed by Axiom Consultants." When I mentioned this fact to representatives from Axiom Consultants during the neighborhood informational meeting held at Bettendorf Fire Station Number Four on 3/8/23, their response was simple, "Cost." They said, "All the available lots already zoned appropriately for their projects are too expensive and they wouldn't be able to turn enough of a profit developing any of them at the current asking prices," unquote. "The fact has not changed. Our homes are our investments. We made sound decisions to ensure we would get the greatest value from our investments for our retirements. A developer's profit should never come at the expense of the profits of the residents and citizens of the community. There's a place for a subdivision such as this, but the proposed parcel is not the appropriate location for a condominium subdivision that quadruples the density of homes in like nearby acreage. In the above average, averages of homes on Hopewell Court, Griffin Lane, and Butterfield Court, there are 27 homes. The acreage for those homes is just shy of 14 acres, roughly twice the acreage of the proposed condominium subdivision, where the density would be 56 homes on approximately seven acres. And as there is at least one parcel appropriately zoned for just this type of subdivision within a half mile of this location, there is no reason the subdivision should be approved, save for the profits of a developer. Additional concern we discussed that I have since discussed with Mark Hunt and Decker plain is the current practice that only residents that attend board meetings in person can participate. One of the items we discussed was the issue that residents attending planning and zone meetings remotely are not given the privilege of participating in the meetings, only observing. I reached out to Mark Hunt and Decker regarding this and was informed that they do not give residents participation privileges. It was stated quite clearly, quote, "If I want to participate, I should attend the meeting in person," unquote. Additionally, it was stated, "We have never given residents participation privileges and legally we do not have to. This is extremely upsetting for a multitude of reasons. One, since COVID struck in 2020, attending events remotely has become a standard, whether going to church, a graduation, a business meeting, going to the doctor, et cetera. Attending and participating remotely has become the norm. It's become our way of life and that's a good thing. This was true prior to the COVID, but a necessity after COVID. For health reasons alone, this is important. Many people are immunocompromised and attending in person can be quite dangerous. This should not preclude them from being part of the process and advocating on their own behalf. There are other reasons people cannot attend in person, sick children, business trips, housebound, et cetera. Again, this should not preclude people from being part of the process and advocating on their own behalf. Our technology has made it possible that we can still partake, even if we can't physically be present. This is not only an accepted practice, it has become expected and that is a good thing." Number three, but what is even more bothersome is that at the March 15/23 Planning and Zone Board Meeting, the developer was given participation privileges. They spoke to the group remotely to make their case for the development they are proposing. Yet I, as a taxpaying citizen who is directly affected by the proposed development, was not given participation rights as a remote attendee. In speaking with Mark, sorry, it was made clear they had given the developer participation rights. This is not only wrong, it is silencing the residents thwarting opposition and showing biased support in favor of the developer. Number four, I was told point blank, if I couldn't attend the meeting in person, I should send letters to the board in advance. It would be part of the public record of this meeting. If I sent these letters within a week of the meeting, members would have a chance to read them. To which I argue, just saying the letters were received and are now part of the record does not ensure members had a chance to read and give due consideration in the decision-making process, nor does it give other residents an opportunity to hear those arguments and show support if they feel the same. Our council are very busy people and have a great deal on their plate. Decision is rendered at the time of the board meeting. The greatest weight for those decisions by definition will be arguments that are addressed at the meeting. Further, considering the package is not available till the Friday prior to the meeting, residents are not given the time needed to prepare and provide arguments to the board a week in advance, as suggested. So our board members have the time needed to consider all arguments, again, silencing the residents' voices. Number five, as I review the current package for the upcoming zoning board meeting for 1923 and the previous package for 3/15/23, nowhere do I see any of the residents' letters that were made part of the public record, nor are they included in the minutes for the 3/15/23 meeting included. This is the very example of why open meeting for virtual participants is needed. Not doing so is, is in essence, silencing residents' voices. Six, and finally, because not allowing residents to participate remotely has always been the practice legally or otherwise, does not mean it should remain the practice. Because it has always been done this way, does not mean it always should be done this way. We, as a society, have adopted to our improved technology to a new normal due to COVID. So should our elected official board meetings. We have so many communication tools at our disposal, many of which are free. There is Zoom meetings, Teams meetings, WebEx, et cetera, all allow full participation of all attendees. Further, all can be recorded to preserve the meeting in its entirety and all have a mechanism by which microphones can be closed till open for questions, concerns, observations, et cetera. All have a chat feature that allows questions in writing and all have a raise hand feature that allows the meeting administrators to know who would like to be heard. This really is not much, too much to ask legally or not. It's just the right thing to do. As all, as always, the Alderman, Alderman Pelzinski, "We so appreciate your support in acting in the best interest of the residents you serve. We also appreciate your support in ensuring our concerns and arguments are heard and given the just concern they deserve." And then there's attachments to that. Would anybody like to hear all the attachments to that as well?
No.
Okay. I assure you that this will be in its entirety entered into the record and available for review. But that is the letter that she asked that we read and then there were attachments to it, which is a letter to the Aldermen and Mark Hunt again, and then other emails from Wendy and husband. So with that, duly noted. Okay, but no, it's good. She has some good points she raised. All right, this is gonna be my last call for the public hearing before I close the public hearing. Last call. The public hearing is closed. All right. Now, discussion by commission.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe Ms. Kapler asked for just a general overview of rezoning issues and I think maybe that's a good place to start.
Thank you.
You know, we've, we talked about in various times with these land use issues, what hat is the commission wearing? Is it the legislative hat or the judicial hat, the quasi-judicial hat? And obviously that will be the same question that the council will be asking once you make your recommendation. In this case, it's a rezoning. This is a legislative matter. The question is, what is in the best interest of the city as a whole? It's not solely the applicant. It's not solely the neighbors, but it's what's in the best interest of the city as a whole. And that's, that's really the question. It's not the nitty gritty issues like some of the issues that come to the site plan stage or the plating stage when we, we get down to some of those details. But it's what, what use, what, in this case, should this property be zoned R3? And what is the, what is best for the city? And Greg went through the factors that are in our code on rezoning amendments, the factors that we look at to help us answer, to help the commission answer that question. And so I think all of the, all of the matters that we heard today, as I heard the, the testimony, there were some big questions like stormwater. Right, can certainly address that. There are questions about home values. There are questions about what sorts of uses should be on a, on certain corners, certain arterial corners, certain corners like Hopewell and Middle. What is, so that's really the question, I guess. I just want to be clear that this is a legislative matter. This is a question of what's in the best interest of the city. And the factors that Greg went through and that we can help to illuminate more are really the questions that are at the fore for you as you make your recommendation on this matter.
So I want to expand on that just slightly. I've heard several people tonight say to us, "We should make the decision to zone this R1." That is not before us tonight. We do not have the ability to say to the developer, "You asked us for R3. We don't think that's right. We want you to build R1." We can't do that. What we're being asked to do is make a decision on this proposal and to say yes or no. There is no R1 before us tonight and we cannot make that decision. And I just want to be sure, I mean, many of you, like a lot of the audiences that we see, this is all new to you, this whole process. It's learning. And so I want to be sure you understand that. No matter what we think this should be personally, we're being asked to make a decision, yes or no, to this. And that, that's what we're deciding.
That's well said. We get an application. Staff reviews that application for compliance with our code. They make a recommendation. There's their professional opinion on, on how it works within our code. We hear what our citizens think about this application and then you make your recommendation to council.
It's, it's just like the Dollar Tree.
Right.
We can't say, oh, we don't think the Dollar Tree should go there. We think something else should go there.
But in that case, it was, it was a site plan, so it was a little different type of decision.
Yeah, that wasn't even the question. Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we have some feedback, Brent, regarding the drainage?
Absolutely. Yes. So the area of Century Heights, there's five or six additions in there. So basically, everything bound by Middle Road on the west, right to about Wilmeyer on the east, and then bound by Hopewell and 53rd. That, basically, that entire area that Greg is showing, plus even a little further east, is all served by a single regional stormwater detention basin. And that is located right where Greg is showing, just on the north side of 53rd. If you drive through there, you can see a large concrete structure, two large culverts. So anyone that's sitting in this room that lives in that area does not have stormwater detention in their own additions. So the argument that they have to do something different than any of you, or the developers of your areas did, is not applicable. That entire basin was engineered with established runoff rates, so that's hydrology 101. So you assume a certain amount of hard surface for an average residential lot, and then apply that with the safety factor through there, and then that whole area is engineered to be served by that impoundment right at 53rd. So Ginger Creek that flows through there, and then the north leg of it in there, you know, those are federally regulated waterways. They're waters of the US. They, we can occasionally get larger basins built on those. There's a few in the area. There's a couple in Davenport, one that I actually worked on over there. You will not get small, little individual ponds on a federally regulated creek. It will not be allowed. So that's why the large regional ones are built. So that was, that was engineered, it's almost 20 years ago at this point. It was 2003, I believe, when that first addition on the north side of 53rd, from the records I can find, went in. So that is where the stormwater detention serves all of your additions and will serve this addition as well. The question of the two smaller basins that was brought up, a couple items on there. One, again, we are not considering site development plan yet, so there are still some tweaks such as that that has to be made. We did send out some preliminary comment letters, knowing how this was, the complexities of this case, and I've got that letter right there. They are being required to provide water quality volume for each building, or I should say for each lot. So the church lot will have a stormwater basin to handle water quality. Now, that's not stormwater detention, that's your lower flows, that's your everyday rainfall events. So that's the inch and a quarter rainfall event that that's meant to handle, it's meant to filter the water before it gets to the creek. So there will be a basin like that on either side of the drainage way through there. That is not shown on the rezoning exhibit. You know, I think Brian talked to that, that degree. We have not gotten to site development plans. So our process through this, this is conceptual, really more on the planning end when we get to the individual site development plans, that, again, we'll have public hearings that those are considered at. That's where we get the drainage calculations from them. That's where we'll get preliminary engineering calculations for their streets, and there will be changes, you know, that frequently happen to accommodate those. So we got the water quality, rezoning. The only one I wanted to point out, you know, the Haley Heights Pond that you see just across the street on 53rd, another regional basin. So the four additions of Haley Heights neighborhoods right there, there's not a single individual pond on any of those additions. All of that water is taken to that one larger basin. And the real benefit of those, one, you can do some amenities like we were able to do at the Hopewell Pond, do a wet pond, you know, people, people, and a lot of kids fish in there, we've got the trails through there. The pond, or I should say the basin for your guys' addition on 53rd actually has some native plantings down in there, is meant to do some stormwater, groundwater recharge, as best I can tell, through there. But the other benefit is that the city owns those. So when you get two acre lots or five acre lots, little commercial lots, you drive around town, you see these little ponds, and frequently, unfortunately, they tend to look bad. They're not maintained. Property owners don't, generally speaking, have that ability or have the knowledge to be able to do that. And they don't get maintained, which is something we struggle with. So these larger basins, the city has actually started, the Hopewell Pond was one of the first ones, and then actually, this one may have been the very first one, where they're deeded over to the city. I can tell you, our crews do clean that. They were down there after that large rainfall event two weeks ago. We had some debris that washed down there, and they went down there, they're frequently having to, to maintain those areas. But again, the city has the staff to be able to do that. I will say that those were designed under previous stormwater retention requirements, so those have gotten stricter over the years. We changed in 2016, made them a little more restrictive. They still have to, the volume that it has to, that it has to carry wouldn't change. It's still the 100-year storm. That's the industry standard for stormwater retention. Some of the low-flow stuff, however, the water quality, for example, the component that we're adding in, that was added in in 2016. So that would not be present for any of your additions. They will have to comply with that. We have talked at the council level as well of starting to go back and try to look at some of these basins and look at retrofitting these structures, these outlet control structures, to see if we can provide more volume, try to reduce the velocities that are leaving there to try to continue to help those downstream properties. But to say that stormwater retention does not exist just is not true. That's where it locates.
Yep, did you have follow-up on that?
From me?
Yep. Oh, I can't do that, sorry, we closed our public hearing, so.
He makes a real sweet, smoothes out a real sweet plan, but I have other questions that, I have questions that he doesn't really answer.
But I'm gonna probably.
I'll send him an email about that.
Absolutely.
Or go see him.
And I think a lot of that, yeah, absolutely, you're more than welcome to, please do. And then I think some of that will be addressed in the subsequent cases.
Again, we're dealing with rezoning, and drainage is not an issue in the rezoning at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
But it will be, it will be addressed in detail at a site plan, generically, at the site plan phase, whenever that happens for any development.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say, Roy, is that no matter what goes there, they'll have to submit those calculations to us, and then we will evaluate them, so that, that will be reviewed no matter what happens.
And in fact, and let me go one more step, maybe it would actually be inappropriate at this point, because you don't know what's going there to do any kind of calculation, engineering evaluation.
They would all be preliminary.
It's all academic, you don't have any clue other than the concept, so it needs to be specific before they do it. So, but I would encourage you to get with, with Brent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can I, can I provide some?
Please do.
Information that I think needs to be put into the record, if you will. I just want to point out that if I did not respond to an email from anyone, Mr. Huffman or anybody here, I do apologize, I do receive a lot of emails, and I try to respond to all of them within 24 to 48 hours. I would point out, and would like the record to show, that I received an email from Mr. Huffman on April 6th. The email starts like this. "Mark, thanks for visiting with me yesterday." So I met with him on April 5th. We talked about this issue because he was at City Hall to come to a meeting, that there was confusion on when the meeting date was. And he did share with me some, some concerns about stormwater at that meeting. And then I replied, because he sent some pictures of the stormwater concerns, and I said, "John, thanks for sending me this information. Our stormwater crew will be looking into the matter. I suspect, I suspect they will come remove the pipe next week." There was an old, kind of corroded, probably.
Corrugated metal pipe.
Corrugated metal, but that the farmer had probably put in there when he tiled his field, and it was causing some destruction. So we did remove that. I would point out that at this time, the city was also experiencing severe storms, and my office was turned into the emergency operations center, and my staff was turned into emergency operators at the same time. So we wear a lot of hats. And then I did get response from, from Mr. Huffman. Mark, thank you. Now, there could have been other emails, and I may have missed them, and I will apologize for that, but I do take a little umbrage to the fact that I, I did not respond when I, when I believe I did. And there could be another email, and I might have missed it, but I would like the record to show that I did respond to those emails on April 6th. Appreciate that.
I don't get to present my side of the, he said, Frank.
No, we had our, we had our public hearing.
It's closed.
He just was allowed to say something, the interaction him and I had.
We gave you lots of time to present what you were talking about. If we're going to get into a he said, she said on the email, that's not going to be productive for any of the rest of us in this, in this meeting tonight, but I'm sure Mark would be happy to meet with you again. Yep. All right, other comments, questions from the commission?
I have a few.
Yep.
I do want to start by thanking the staff. I know you guys have worked a lot on this and given us a lot of information, too. I think we had, I don't know, somewhere between 40 to 60 emails from you folks, and appreciate that. We've taken a lot of time to read those as well, so I do want you to know that we, we do care, and we've put a lot of effort into this, as well as the city has. I do have some questions for the staff, starting with, where it says future land use and comprehensive plan. Says the proposed development is consistent with comprehensive plan goal D, provide housing options and reinvest in existing neighborhoods. Having a little bit of a hard time of seeing how this particular development or changing this area, which is currently A1, 2, R3, would be an investment in the existing neighborhood. I do think that the existing neighborhood could be detrimentally affected by an R3 next to the R1, like the home values, as they, as they described, and actually spoke with several Realtor friends of my own, checking in on that, checking the facts, and that is factual, that when you put in, you know, a lower cost of home, it does decrease the value of the homes next to it. So that is one of my concerns that I feel is written in here that might not be accurate. And then also, if you scroll down to the staff recommendation on page three, two different questions there. First one is number three, I would like some clarity, if you could help me, Greg. It says, "If the responses for subsection 111513B1 and 1111513B2 of this section are not affirmative, then either the amendment request recommendation must be denied, or the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council must amend the comprehensive plan to provide the required consistency." So, I'm sorry, where is that 111513B1 that's being referenced on here?
This is in the eight-step rezoning test, and it's the first two questions. The rezoning conforms to the future land use map in the comprehensive plan as described in the preamble and further in subsection A-1-3 of Appendix 1. The amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. And the answer to the first question is, both UMI and ULI future land use designations permit R3 mixed residential zoning. For the second question, the answer is, request follows comprehensive plan's goal D, provide housing options and reinvest in existing neighborhoods, and goal G to attract young people. So the housing options are a different type of housing than what is surrounding the area, and it's a graduated housing. If you do look at the comp plan, it talks again about graduating uses from a less intense use to a more intense use as you go to more heavily traveled areas, and that's true for Euclidean zoning or development character areas, whatever one you want, and those are the two types of zoning statuses that we have within our zoning ordinance. This is commonly found in every community in the country. You do not put single-family homes right up on an arterial street typically. You don't see that. If you go up and down Middle Road, you're not going to find any R1 zoning statuses along Middle Road. You're going to see more intense or buffering type mechanisms along Middle Road. Middle Road is going to be a four-lane street. That's in the CIP, that's coming. And when we see Hopewell, which is a collector's street right now, the traffic is also going to increase along Hopewell. When you get a, an intersection between the two, just like we saw with the commercial area with Belmont and Middle Road, you're going to see more intensity along there. The idea is that this type housing is supposed to buffer R1-type housing. You don't use the same type of housing to buffer the same type of housing. That does not conform to any planning standard used in this country, essentially. You have a stair stepping down of intensity as you get further removed and get into local streets and less traveled areas. That is normal. You do not see, in many instances, R1 housing right up against a major arterial street, and especially at an intersection of what is either a minor arterial or a collector connecting into that arterial street, Middle Road. And the traffic along Middle Road is only going to get more volumous, and that's the same also for Hopewell. So what you're doing is you're anticipating those uses that would go up against the more intensely trafficked areas.
So would you say that it's accurate that that entire area could be separated so that the church could still exist as the buffer and have the next step up or step, I would say probably step up from R1 being R2 between the R1 and the church? If those two parcels were separated?
That, you're not, you're not looking at somehow separating parcel into these two distinct uses, you're looking at what you see going on along many different parts of the city and the quad cities.
I hear what you're saying.
So you're not going to have everything going up there being R1 right up to the point of that ravine.
Sure, I hear your logic there.
I think, I think the other part, Greg, is, is we can't analyze what's not proposed.
Sure, I'm just trying to see if this makes sense for the area or not.
So it's hard to do hypotheticals. I would caution against that, because then we could get into, you know, you know, there's all kinds of variations that could come through.
Sure, I definitely agree that, you know.
We also can't tell the developer what to put in their property.
Right, we can't, we can't be designer and reviewer.
Is R3 make sense for this area or not? That's the question at hand, that I was also questioning myself. Okay, my last question was staff recommendation number four, which actually goes right back into goal D, will not negatively impact the nearby parcels. So it just says, "The subject property after the council, city council approval of requested zoning will be designed to permit characteristics of said zoning districts that will not negatively impact the nearby parcels." So just something for us to consider, whether or not that is true of this recommendation that is being put before us for the R3 in the area.
Just for perspective, I looked up just now on the county website for looking at your impact question, and I'm no appraiser, but I looked at the two or three houses that had joined Christie Lane and the new development with the multifamily with the, with the windmill and the assessment from the one, the two adjacent to the R3, one went from 428,720 in assessed value to 535,800 in the most recent assessment since that development's been done, a 25% increase. And then the one on the other side of the street went from 481,990 to 553,900, a 15% increase. So I wouldn't say it's all the time, it's still two unique kind of subdivisions, and you transition from one to the other a lot of places. I don't know that the data necessarily says, at least from the assessor's standpoint, that there was an impact across the road here.
This is the Meadows?
Yes, for the Meadows over by the horse farm.
I appreciate your diligence in that.
No guarantee, but I don't think it's dropping huge percentages because you have a different type of neighborhood transition.
So the one you were referencing is one that's already occurred.
That's the one, while it was brought up, it was the Meadows that, there's a similar, but they were different.
Destruction right now.
It's, it's the same developer, the same type of product that'll be doing the connection areas, so at least it's a data point to look at.
Okay.
Others?
I'll say a couple things. Hopefully I won't get stoned at some point.
Well, potentially.
First, I just want to mention on regarding Axiom being on the call last month, I view that as they were a tool for us on the commission to use. We needed to have access to the developer with questions. A lot of these items here, we don't want to get backed into a corner, so we don't want to go changing the zoning, not having the ability to find out a little bit more information, which is what we're doing right here now. If we were real strict about this, we, this, we would have already voted on this an hour, at least an hour ago, because we would have only considered the zoning, not what could possibly be, not the renderings, but, so I think they were a tool. Having said that, though, the city definitely needs to look into, into figuring out a way to accommodate everyone without making these meetings five hours long. Stepping from the single-family to the commercial, I am the one that brought this up last meeting, and I'm going to bring it up again. This was the plan all along. It always has been the plan. The fact that somebody put in a $500,000 house that's The fact that somebody put in a $500,000 house that's worth $800,000 now, doesn't change the plan. The value of all of the property has gone up, as our commissioner just said. So property values are climbing, we do need a buffer. I know you don't want to hear this, but yeah, it could be something a lot worse sitting there than a church or what they're going to build. And this is the part that I may get, get stoned on, how many of, how many of you got in a letter from the assessor recently?
Yeah.
Yeah? So if you don't plan on selling your home anytime soon, by the way, I'm a financial advisor also, wouldn't it be a good idea if your values stayed down until you're ready to sell? That's how I look at it. Is I'd like to play, pay lower property taxes for the next 20 years that I'm in my home that I love and have no intention of moving away from, and then have it go up right before I'm ready to sell.
That's not going to happen.
So, I, I realized that's not going to sit well with quite a few people out there, but I wasn't happy when I got my assessed value statement. I don't believe, based on what we've seen over the years, that this development is going to drop the property values down at all. As a matter of fact, I think that after it's built, done, in place, trees and shrubs are in, the values are going to be same as they were, if not considerably higher. So that's just my opinion on that, and there we go.
Lynn?
I, Janice, I lean with you of the first do no harm concept, and I really hear what you're saying on property values and being a concern. And we had an audience member look back or comment on, on the Dan Dolan project that caused some damage to the homes around it. And, and for the record, now that it matters, because I got voted down, I was the only person on this commission that voted against it, because of my fear of, don't, you know, don't do any harm to the surrounding property. And so, we do, we vote with the information we have, and we vote within the lanes that were given, and, and I fully respect what you're saying on, on the surrounding property values, but we don't know that. Historically, the numbers don't support that yet. We all keep, our home, our values keep going up in Bettendorf. And in the Dolan example, I voted no, it didn't matter, the majority rules, and we moved forward, because you voted on the information you've had in front of you. And, and we're in the same spot tonight. And, and I, they're not the same case, obviously, but I've been on the no side of the fence, worrying about the ground around us, and, and it really does matter, and I didn't, I don't know where I'm going with that, but I do respect what you're saying, but as it's presented to us and as is the work that the city staff has done here, and historically, knowing this was always the plan, I, I have to vote in favor of it. That's the lane that's been given to me.
Okay, thank you.
I'll share a few thoughts.
Please.
I've been involved in two comprehensive plan developments for the city, where we look ahead and establish land uses, and that contributes to, you've heard Greg refer to that tonight. That is driven by arterial streets and development around arterial streets. And for how long Greg, we had the Mr. Cod corridor for Middle Road, and that has changed over time because the vision has changed. But Middle Road has always been an arterial street, and we've always looked for this step down effect. We have in very intensive uses planned for arterial roads, and we try to step down the uses towards the, the neighbors and the residences. And this is a good example of us doing that. And the comprehensive plan that we're looking at, the map on the screen right now, shows that step down. That's the way that we've done this across the city. So as the R1, Mr. Dugan referred to the R1 development marching north, it has, but it hasn't marched north abutting the arterial roads. So I think, I agree with you, I think it will continue to go in that direction, and we will continue to provide, try to provide buffers between it and the arterial streets. I also wanted to comment on Mr. Griffith's comment, he gave us a great outline of multifamily housing that's been developed over the last couple of years, and I wish that you could have been at each one of those meetings, because there's always a lot of people who aren't in favor of what's being developed in their backyard. So many of the places that you pointed to as examples of good development were opposed by multiple people because they didn't want that in their backyard. And that's pretty common, we see that on a regular basis. So I'd be all in favor of that proposal from the, from the developer for R1, but we don't have that tonight. We're looking at, we're looking at what is a good fit there, which is R3, I think, I believe, I agree with Lynn.
Are you at a motion point?
I can be.
Let's go there.
Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-018, subject to the staff recommendations.
I second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve case 23-018, subject to staff recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion or second? Nope? I will just make one, I, I think that the transition area is, is logical, we do see a lot of resistance. I, I would probably maintain that a number of the folks that built along Hopewell didn't do that, knowing that Hopewell was even going to go through on some of those houses farther than east, but this is a pretty soft, although it may not feel that way, use to that property, because there are many other uses if this were not going through, that could happen on an urban low intensity zoning. So given the transition, the proximity to the arterial system between Middle Road and Hopewell, that's why I would support it. And that's all I have to say about that.
I'll, I'll make one comment. For those that are going to be backed up against this, now's the good time to be with the developer discussing what kind of shrubbery, trees, berming that you would like to see back there. And I think you got probably one of the best builders around, from what I understand, that's probably going to be building that outside area in the Windmill, Windmiller family. They will listen to you, so I would communicate with them.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Thank you. 23018 is recommended to the city council for approval. This is bathroom break and reshuffle. Okay, everybody, we're going to get rolling here so we can get done.
I dropped the whole cookie in my mouth. That was yours, I ate mine.
Oh, nice, thank you, all right. Taylor?
All right, thank you Chairman. Next case, or cases I should say, on the agenda, we have a proposal for a future land use map change. There'll be two changes. I'll go through that presentation first, and then I'll subsequently go over a presentation that will cover the related rezoning after that, so, kind of walk you through it.
Just jump in, Taylor's going to give you, give you it all up front. We've deliberate, we debated on how to do this, we're going to give you the whole kit and caboodle up front.
Okay.
And then we can move to public hearing.
I'll try to, yeah, and I can respond to questions after the present, after the public hearing, uh, presentation.
We'll help each other through this.
Okay, thank you. All right. Cases 23-13 and 21, so this is Forest Grove Drive and Devil's Glen Road, future land use map amendments. The property is located south of Forest Grove Drive and west of Devil's Glen Road. The applicant is EA Enterprises LLC. The request is to change that future land use, that's on the comp, that's designated in the comp plan, from, currently it's look, it's shown as parks and open space, and they'd like to change, requesting to change it to urban low intensity on the outside and urban medium intensity closer to the intersection. So you have the existing on the left and the proposed on the right. Currently, the property is zoned C1, and then there's R1 on, on the western boundary, R4 on the southern boundary, across the street, that's Copper Ridge addition, that's all R3 zoning. And then the north, we have still farmland that's zoned A1. This property was zoned C1 originally in 1996, part of it was that the inner ring was zoned C1, and actually the outer ring was C5. C5 was subsequently eliminated in the 2000s, it was combined, kind of blended into our C1, so that's why we have a large parcel of C1 at this location. Little bit more history on the site. In 1999, a site development plan was approved for the site. This was for the ballpark, for the Barnstormer Baseball Club. This use was a, intended as a, and shown on this plan as a temporary use, clearly states in the notes, the site is currently zoned C1. The Ball of Diamonds and Proposed Concession Stan are temporary developments until the site becomes viable as a commercial development in accordance with the city's long-term land use plan. So that was in 1989. Since then, the ballpark is not being used anymore, so the property is back to ag use, but still zoned C1. Little history on the future land use map at this location since this land was annexed into the city. So there's annexed in the city in the early 1970s, 1971 I believe. The future land use map in 1973 showed it as a medium density, they had different land use categories as the decades went on. So you can see that corner right there. Going to 1984, they showed the corner as like a medium density commercial residential, the outer area lower density residential, and then the east corner, or the northwest corner of Devil's Glen and Forest Grove as commercial, and they actually had northern areas shown as industrial, so things do change in our comp plan over time. In 1994, we have what's more resembles kind of some of the more recent plans, we have a lower transitional, like a medium density residential, lower density residential, and then right in the corner, some commercial. In 2002, we get to a more dense commercial, a transitional residential, commercial, and then low density residential. Same thing in 2010, it was consistent, so I'm trying to show you the, the trend of the plan, the, the city councils and planning commissions before us had looked at this and consistently have put this at some type of transitional residential, commercial at the intersection of Forest Grove and Devil's Glen. Until in 2017, this most recent large update to the comprehensive plan and thus, and the future land use map, this area was shown as parks and open space. Staff looked into this, a lot, a lot of areas were changed from what we had a typical neighborhood, we had commercial and medium density residential and low density residential land uses, and we adopted this new concept, which is the urban low intensity, urban medium intensity, and urban high, it's a mixed use, land use kind of way of going about things. This area was designated as parks and open space, and there's some thought that maybe because the ballparks were there, that the consultant assisting that with us on that changed it, but just in case, staff, myself included, looked through multiple park plans that the city has had over the decades, other, other plans that would designate this as a future park, it's never been owned by the city. We've never, we have, I've found no city council budget plans or any of the like, anything of the like that shows that this, the city wants to acquire this as a future park. So really, that came to the conclusion that this, there was no intention for the, or for this to be a park. Now, that hasn't been brought to, up at any other plans that we can find, and we really, staff contends the only other solution or result would be that this was a error on the mapping portion of the comp plan. Now, if there's other evidence, I, I'm not, I'm not aware of it. This, the proposal is going from, so the low, urban low intensity is what all Valley Winds addition is. Actually, Valley Wind 6 is urban medium intensity. Across the street, we have urban medium intensity, this is north of Forest Grove Drive and neighborhood commercial. To the east, we do have urban low intensity in Copper Ridge, zoned R3. So this is very similar what, and going back to those historical plans of what has been in previous decades of plans, and staff would assume that, could only assume, but staff is taking this request as it is, and believes that this is consistent with the surrounding land uses. Uh, this is a vacant area, so we have to look at the surrounding land uses, and it also provides transitioning from that low density, single family homes, higher density single family homes, these are a lot smaller lots, it might be even villas, and then transitions right at the intersection of two currently busy arterials, and the future will be very busy arterials, Forest Grove Drive and Devil's Glen Road. We'll mention that the, these ULI future land use, and just getting into the, how it informs the zoning code and what zoning can be allowed there, R1, R2, R3, and C1 are allowable zoning districts in the ULI, and then in UMI, R1, R2, R3, R4, R5, C1 and C2 districts are all considered compatible districts in the, in the UMI. So just kind of remember that. As I mentioned, yeah, these are very too large thoroughfares, this is consistently mentioned in our comp plan about, you know, where we have large traffic, that's our commercial, that's where commercial is attracted to, and then providing transitional buffering from our low density residential to those large, those intersections, or by buffering, buffering can also be through berms and landscaping as well. That's really consistently mentioned in our comp plan. Having said that, the proposed future land use map amendments for the southwest corner of Forest Grove Drive and Devil's Glen Road are consistent with many of the comprehensive plan's goals and strategies for development in the city of Bettendorf, and the proposed amendments would have likely been adopted by the city in 2017 if the private and temporary baseball fields were not arrengely designated as future parks and open space. Given the evidence and reasons stated in the staff analysis of the request, staff recommends the plan, zoning commission recommend approval of the proposed future land use map amendments from parks and open space to urban low intensity, so that's for 23021, and urban medium intensity, 23013, 13. Okay. So that is the future land use component of the development and the applicant, the application. I will now go to the zoning portion, so the, in order to get the zoning application in, they have to have the future land use appropriate, so they're both, they're both tied together, but I'm presenting them all together, all at the same time, so bear with me. Next cases for the rezoning portion, this is for case 23-014, 017, 022, 023, and 024. We're getting back at the same parcel, it's a little larger because there is some land outside of that area that was, the future land use was requested to be changed. The current zoning is R1 up here and C1 in the rest of the area, they're proposing C1, C2 residential, C2 commercial, and R1 and R3. So it's just said a lot there, there's a lot of cases. So right now, we have R1, this is the current zoning, in that little northwest corner, and the rest is C1. Proposal is to have it northeast corner, a, a large chunk of it to be C2, and there'll be some, they're proposing some restrictions, some C2 residential, some R3 residential, this is currently C1, no change needed, another section is needed from R1 to C1, and then a little sliver from currently C1 to R1. It's a lot there. Let's look at the, how this fits in with the proposed future land use map I just presented, and it fits in, and that, with those compatible zoning districts, for those compatible, with those future land use designations, the C2 districts are fitting in with the urban medium intensity, so those are your most, more intense districts or dense districts, however it's commercial or residential, and then your less intense districts or dense districts are in that urban low, and then you have the currently And then you have the currently R1 zoned areas out here in that urban low intensity area. And Valley Winds currently developed and undeveloped. Going back to the, how the property was zoned, I can, I kind of touched on it in the last presentation. It's currently C1 Neighborhood Commercial. And it was, like I said, it was zoned C1 and C5, which was an office transitional in 1996. So this is very similar type of setup with the, what the proposal is now. Have a transitional and then a more dense, intense commercial on the corner. Going to some of the points to break down the different types of zoning here. This northeast corner, the applicant is, is requesting C2 for, versus the current C1 for a number of reasons. C2 does allow uses, restaurant sizes that are larger than, I believe, 3,500 square feet. That's a major, actually, I believe the applicant came to us and asked what, what allows this. The C2 portion of the townhomes, we'd allow townhomes in both R3. And we also allow townhomes in C2. They're different lot sizes, they're different density. So you get a 20-foot setback with a, I believe it's like an 80-foot-long minimum lot size in the C2. But in an R3, you're getting like a 100-foot lot size with a 25-foot setback. So they feel a little differently. I'm not sure if the products will be different, but it could be the same product in different sized lots. So you get different yard sizes. The R3 areas do abut against some detention outlots and some easement areas that aren't able to be developed. So they're going to have a little larger yards. So it's a less dense transition area, while this area will have a little denser feel, but still townhomes. So as mentioned, it's C2, and they are proposing a restriction for only townhomes in that C2. C1, let's go with the R1 area, is currently C1. But as you can tell, in order to fit more single-family lots into Valley Winds, the unfinished area, they need a little larger space in the back of these lots. So they're shaving off, I guess it was, is the proper term, for creating more backyard area so they can fit full, single-one, our family home, or R1, single-family homes in that area. And then they're extending the C1 area up here. And that will become evident on the concept so they can fit a more C1 type of retail building, which would be like a strip mall, which we see in a lot of C1 developments throughout town. And this is just the proposed concept. So you have your townhomes, the denser townhomes here, your less dense townhomes, the larger yards that I mentioned here. The, the concept showing retail up here. Your entrances are conceptual, but they are, I believe, as close as you can get to the intersection of Devil's Glen and Forest Grove. And then your denser restaurants, retail, and the C2 commercial to the northeast. Going back to those restrictions that are proposed. The C2 area, and I won't, this is a copy of the submitted restrictions and signed by the applicant. So these are being proposed by the applicant, the city didn't require these. They're going above and beyond, they're kind of creating a hybrid C1 district, in my opinion, by restricting tobacco vape shops, gas stations, automotive sales, pawn shops, a number of other things, and it's all available. I won't read through every single one. So that's for the C2 commercial area. And then I mentioned for the C2 residential area, just in case, you know, to reaffirm that they intend this area to be townhomes only, that's a restriction for the townhomes only for that C2 area. Just to show you the, the area that's being zoned from C1 to R1. This is the preliminary plat of Valley Winds Phase 2. So this preliminary plat's kind of the concept plan of the whole larger subdivision. And then smaller final plats are then developed. So this northern area has not been developed yet. And because the ownership of the northeast parcel wasn't the same as the subdivision, they couldn't get lots on the north side of the proposed Blackbird Circle. By rezoning that, that would allow lots on both sides of the street, which is logical for a subdivision. So that's just kind of the background on that, that kind of quirky rezoning request. Going over some of the renderings, I believe applicant has, is going to present on these as well. But these are just some of the renderings, what they're kind of, the like and the feel, the character of what they're proposing of the retail. Kind of a different view. And here's the rendering of those townhomes. And I wanted to touch on a couple other things. This proposal was first received by the city, I think, the beginning of the year, just the beginning stages. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting that they ran. It was well-attended, I believe, by many of the people here tonight. They took information from that meeting and they changed the proposed plans. So there's been a, it's been a reiterative process, which they've gotten feedback from the neighbors and public. I think they initially were proposing a gas station, and that was removed. And now you have no gas station shown in the concept plan and these restrictions. Also, the townhome, there's just, it's very, this is a very, for rezoning, the rezoning phase, very honed in. They've gone to put a lot of restrictions on the, on these areas. Just want to touch base on that. Staff does, and Greg had done the same thing for the, the previous rezoning. We do go through those criteria, and I've touched on all those criteria. Does this meet the future land use map? That's if the future land use map is changed by the previous cases. The goals and objectives, it meets many, it meets, it increases housing diversity, attracts and retains businesses. Are we talking the subject property? The, the surrounding area is mostly vacant except for the east and the very far south. Staff does not, is not in the opinion that it will negatively affect the surrounding property. There's a large berm on this, on Copper Ridge subdivision. There'll be detention pond, they've really transitioned this and laid, laid out the landscaping buffering on an arterial road, two arterial roads, so that, that's another point on that checklist. There's adequate public utilities at the site. This pattern of development has occurred, and now it hasn't occurred maybe in surrounding areas. But if you take a step back for the whole city and look at how many arterial roads we have in the city, where's the commercial going to go? You have to really kind of take a look at, this is probably going to be our busiest arterial road in the, in the future, which is Forest Grove, one of our busiest. And that's where our comp plan, our principles in the past and present say to put the, you know, designate those corners as commercial and then transition, have those buffers of different densities and landscaping, et cetera, to buffer it out. So the pattern of development does lend itself into an area for this type of development. And is the proposed development in the public interest and not solely in the interest of the applicant. As mentioned, the applicant has held the neighborhood meetings, reached out, you know, got input, reevaluated, reassessed, proposed restrictions, you know. So I think there's been a lot of give and take and openness. And this is just the first real public meeting that we're holding tonight. So another step, and there'll be many more steps if this ever is going to be actually developed, so. Having said that, I can go through just kind of the recommendation for, since this is multiple cases, we have multiple rezonings, but it's all part of one whole development. I'll go through each case number. So case number 2314 is the C2 commercial area, the northeast corner. The recommend, the request is from C1 to C2. Staff is recommending approval of that with the following condition, that acceptance of those proposed commercial use restrictions, which are included in the packet, they're included in the presentation, available online. So those are all publicly available. So that's 2314. 2317, that's the C1 to R1 to make room for those single-family lots in Valley Winds, future Valley Winds. And staff is recommending approval of that case, so it's 2317. 23-022, so that's going from C1 to C2, and I'll call it townhome use. And staff is recommending approval with the following condition, acceptance of the proposed residential use restriction that has been submitted by the applicant. So that's that area right there, the denser townhomes. 23-023, that's C1 to R3, and staff is recommending approval of that area, no conditions. And then this final, the final case, 2324, so that's the far northwest corner that's going from R1 to C1. Staff initially, in the staff report did not include this, but having looked at that, some comments recently, we are recommending the condition be placed on the C1, just because, I believe, we believe the intent of the development has been to have no gas stations in this area. So, and technically, without a condition on this, there could be a gas, a four-pump gas station in C1. So staff is recommending, recommending a condition be placed on the C, R1 to C1 rezoning that prohibits limited and unlimited gas sales. Relating to the area that remains C1, the developer has reached out. So this area that's currently C1 and not being rezoned tonight, the applicant has made assurances, and I believe they'll speak on that, that they can place either a future restricted covenant at the plating phase or the site plan phase that would have similar restrictions. We just don't have the power to have those conditions tonight, just want to be clear about that. Okay. I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mark, anything from your perspective?
I just want to thank Taylor Beswick. I don't know that you could have done that presentation any better if you had a PhD in urban planning. So that was amazing, it's a very complex case. I know people in the audience may not agree with what's being proposed, but for us to present those facts and do that, a better job could not have been done, and I just, you know, I truly appreciate his efforts. I think he did a really good job detailing what's in front of you and what's not in front of you. You have a future land use decision to make. You also have these multiple rezonings that kind of all come together to make one project. And we can't condition pieces of the property that aren't in front of us for rezoning. And there is a piece of the property that is just C1 now, and it's just going to stay C1. So it's not before you for rezoning. But we believe, and I think, I see the attorney here for the, for the applicant, they're going to put the same condition on that. No gas station, not a one-pump, not a two-pump, not a three-pump, not a fourth pump, no gas station. So it's the city's contention that if this project does move through to, to further develop, there will not be a gas station associated with it in any shape or form. How that gets codified and done legally is, is yet to come on some of these pieces of property. But everything that's being rezoned today will not have a gas station on it.
Chris, can you give us just a brief overview of our procedural process here?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just I'll go through a few rules of the road, just because this is a little bit, much more complicated actually than, than most of our matters before the commission. We have several, seven interrelated cases regarding this development. And we want to hear from everybody. I want to assure you that you don't have to speak at any particular public hearing. We will have seven public hearings, and each of these public hearings has an associated action. So what we will do is we will encourage you to make your comments at the first public hearing. But you can make them at any of these public hearings, and we will cross-file and make all of the comments at each of these public hearings, part of the record and the other public, associated public hearings. So you speak at any of these seven, and it will be part of the record. Want to just be clear on that. But I think it would be most efficient, and we all want this to be as efficient as possible, to, to speak at the first one. But you can come and speak at the later ones. I will also recommend to the commission that after each of these public hearings, there will then be a commission action. And I presume that you would like to hear everything about this development prior to making a decision. So my recommendation would be to, once you, once the public hearing is closed, you then table the commission action until we get through all of the public hearings. And then, once we get through all of the public hearings, we will then take from the table those table actions. And then you will then have before you the seven actions that you will need to take some sort of substantive action on.
So that's- To make a motion to table?
And I can help with that. But after, after we close a public hearing, we will then table that action so that you can make sure that you hear all of the comments from the, from everybody that's here.
All right.
Chris, can I just ask some questions just for clarity? I think I know the answer, but just to be clear.
Sure.
The conditions that are being listed, the no gas station, the final word there is no gas station ever, right? The, the, these conditions stay with the land, not with the builder, not with the developer, not anything. The zoning stays with the ground.
That's right, it's part of the-
If for some reason this plan changed, we've put those, those conditions in place.
Only if it-
It's part of, it's a part of the rezoning ordinance, so it goes with the land.
Only if it's rezoned. If it doesn't get rezoned, it's just C1, and it lives as C1, then whatever C1 could propose to come in there. So the no gas station only comes if you rezon it and add those restrictions. Sorry, Chris.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. That's part of the, it's part of the, it's already zoned C1. If it's, if these rezonings go through tonight, several of them have conditions attached if they are recommended by you and ultimately approved by council. So that's, that's, is that helpful?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question, since this is a different process also. Based on our last case, we get a chance to ask questions. Then we turn to the audience for a public hearing. Then some of their questions might be answered. Then it's, they don't get to say words after that?
There's a public, the public hearings, there will be seven here.
Right.
Once they're closed, they're closed.
Right.
The, the intention of a public hearing is to provide testimony, not to, not to ask questions back and forth to staff. They can, they can make their testimony, that you can then take what you hear and ask questions to staff.
Okay.
And, and then, so that's, that's how it should go.
Okay.
All right. So we're going to open a public hearing here in the David of publication.
Yes.
All right, then we will open the public hearing. So at this point, we would take comments, wow, we have somebody up there already. You want, you want to go home, okay, so do we. But we will take comments now during the hearing, open hearing, and then we will close the hearing. So please begin.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Jaeger. I'm an attorney with the Pasternak Law Firm. I'm here tonight representing the applicant. Excuse me, also with me is Mr. Samir Kolcarney, who will do the presentation of the slideshow and explain a little bit about the concept plan. Because we understand that while tonight is purely about the land use plan and the zoning, when you have vacant ground, people are concerned about how it's going to look. And so we want to try and address some of those concerns with this presentation this evening. As I understand what's been said, everything that I say tonight in this first public hearing, anything that Mr. Kolcarney says tonight in this first public hearing will be considered a part of that public hearing and every subsequent public hearing and added to that record. I think that's a very reasonable thing. I'd expect the same thing to happen for anybody who is in opposition to the application to save us from having to do this seven times. I'm also reminded on nights like this that the commission is full of volunteers. You're not paid to do this, and you're trying to do it within the rules of the city and the state to make the city a better place. And especially on nights like this, when it runs so long, I'm appreciative of the effort. I think even the people who would be opposed to the application would say the same thing. We appreciate it, so thank you. Now, as I go through my presentation, I want to talk for a moment about the land use plan or the land use component. Because staff has done a fine job of saying that it's- Because staff has done a fine job of saying that it's too thoroughfares, but I want to put a little finer point on it. The city of Bettendorf and Davenport have spent millions of dollars, maybe even tens of millions of dollars, to make Forest Grove and Veterans Memorial Parkway the third city street that connects one end of Davenport to the other end of Bettendorf. The other two being 53rd Avenue and Locust Middle. The interesting thing about this is if you look at Middle Road in Bettendorf, there are a number of connection points to that street. 14th, 18th, 23rd, Devil's Glen, you just keep going on out. Belmont, Tango Foot, all the way out. You can get onto Middle Road at any number of places. When you look at 53rd, you can only get on in Bettendorf at three places. At 18th, at Devil's Glen, and at the Roundabout. When you go up to Forest Grove, your Bettendorf connections are only Middle Road and Devil's Glen. Anybody in central Bettendorf, anybody in northern Bettendorf who's trying to access Forest Grove, or anybody from Davenport-Bettendorf who's trying to access middle or central Bettendorf, going to hit that intersection, Devil's Glen and Forest Grove. That's going to be, simply by design of the road system, either the busiest intersection in the city or one of the top five. There's just no other way of doing it. Traffic is going to be too much. And because traffic is going to be so much at that intersection, I might parenthetically say in talking to staff, I understand that a traffic light has already been purchased and will be going up there shortly in anticipation of some of this traffic increase. But because that traffic is so intense, so voluminous, that it would be appropriate to have commercial on that corner. And not only commercial, but commercial that serves a wider geographic clientele. Which is why, in part, we're saying we would like to have C2 in that corner. And we understand that when you're talking about commercial sitting next to residential, people can have concerns. But you have no, you have no really, let me rephrase this. I want to say it correctly. There are places in Bettendorf where you have commercial right against single-family detached residential. Look on 53rd, just to the west of the Roundabout. You've got the Stouts Tavern Bar. You've got Oak Grove Tavern, which I've visited. It has no food service at all. It's a very nice place. Right across the street from single-family residential. And yet there has been very little concern and certainly no problems that have been noted with that interaction of use, in part because of how it looks as well as what the use is. Again, tonight we are here on the zoning, but we understand the concern and the need to look at how we think this is going to evolve. That's why I have Mr. Kolcarney here, to try and walk through some of our concept plans. We do not have any specific user under contract at this time. So we need to have some flexibility in how we market and develop the site. We might have users who want 1,500 square feet. We might have users who want 5,000 square feet. We might have users who want 7,000 square feet. Until we can get signed contracts, we're not going to know for sure. And that's why we haven't come forward saying, condition our rezoning requests on a concept plan. Because we just don't have one yet that's locked down. So, we have tried to focus on the uses. Now, I wasn't there at the neighborhood meeting, but I have heard from my client loud and clear that the neighbors do not want a gas station on that corner. So that is the first thing that we tried to address. The concern about the C1 and gas stations, which is a reasonable concern, I'm not going to say otherwise, was not brought up to us until today. So we don't have any paperwork to give to you today on that. But as staff has indicated, and as Mr. Curran has indicated, we are and will provide a document that restricts the use to no gas stations for the area we're asking to make C1. On the area that's not before you, we will work with staff to figure out a way to guarantee that that will not be a gas station as well. Now, I heard, I've been here all night, you've been here all night. I heard at least twice in other presentations, concerns about gas stations. I go to the gym on Quad City Performance over there by the Oak Grove Tavern, and my trainer came to me and said, "Did you hear there's going to be an eight pump gas station at the corner of Devil's Glen and Forest Grove?" I said, "How do you hear that? It's not going to be an eight pump gas station." He says, "That's what I've heard." Well, he's not here today. Hopefully he's watching the live stream. I tried to explain to him, that's not the case. What we do is we put conditions on the zoning. And basically what happens is, if the condition is violated, the zoning goes away. And now you can't, you can't do what you want to do because you don't have the zoning for it. Now, staff gets to double check this long before it gets to that point. Because there are site plans, because there are building permits, because there are certificates of occupancy, there are a number of staff hurdles that a developer has to go over in order to actually operate a business. So when we say that it will not be a gas station, there will be no sales of gasoline, not only does the ordinance say that, but all these other steps that a developer will have to go through in order to get the permission to actually operate the business will all take care of that concern as well. As it relates to the C2 zoning, we put down no gasoline sales. I tried to write it three different ways to make it as specific as I could to let everybody know there was no gasoline sales. But we understand the concerns of the neighbors. And so we said, what else can we do in the use context to try and make this a more palatable development? Well, the city, it no longer has the Mr. Cod, as was discussed earlier, the, the Middle Road Development Overlay District. Now you've got a downtown development overlay district where the city is saying, we're trying to make the downtown better. And we want to make it more inviting. We want to make it more welcoming. We think, as we redevelop the downtown, there are certain uses that maybe just don't fit. And so there's a laundry list in your city code of these uses that don't fit. We looked at that and we said, "That makes sense. We think we should prohibit those uses on that site as well." Staff didn't turn, twist any arms. This isn't anything that came from the neighborhood meeting about tobacco or vape shops. We took the list that the city said are uses that while legal, maybe are better suited in other areas. And we say, "Let's apply that to this site as well." So we are prohibiting tobacco or vape shops, tattoo parlors, storage units, automobile sales, service, body repair, pawn shops, or quick loan businesses, storage yards, or service vehicle parking, firework sales, and as, because it's listed in your code as well, adult entertainment uses. Having known some of the other restrictions on adult entertainment uses, that, that area would never have been allowed in any event. But we add it because that's in the downtown overlay district. And so we think, as it relates to the C2 zoning, we are not only addressing the neighborhood concerns, but we are going beyond the neighborhood concerns to try and figure out, excuse me again, how to make this a good development for the area. On the parcel just to the south of the C2 zoning, we are asking for C2 specifically for townhomes. And as staff said, there are different setbacks and different yardage requirements for townhomes in the C2 district. I'm not sure why the code got written that way, but it's different. And in this particular case, it helps us. Because you've got Devil's Glen as a major thoroughfare on one side of it. Because it's a major thoroughfare, there are additional setbacks required, buffer areas. And on the other side, we've got that utility easement upon which nothing can be built. Now, we intend ultimately to make that utility easement area be very nice, sort of park-like, because you're not going to be able to build anything on it anyway. But because we're sort of squeezed from the east and the west, we said, using the C2 zoning for that area and restricting it only to townhomes enables us to get the development in that we want. On the area to the, I'm going to call it the southwest corner, where we're asking for R3, we have less pressure. There is, you're not against the arterial street. You've got a little more room to operate. We think we can get the townhomes in, in the R3. They're going to be the exact same townhome. Mr. Kolcarney will talk a little bit about what those units look like, and probably must, as equally important to the neighbors, what those units are projected to cost when we get his presentation going. As we work our way back up, Taylor explained to you why we wanted to change some of it to an R1, a little sliver to allow us to continue to develop some single-family residential housing. I was not at the meeting with the neighbors, but I understand that at the meeting with the neighbors, there was some presentation about how that residential to the far west was going to look. We didn't bring it forward. We're still trying to figure out street alignment. My understanding is there was some concern from neighbors about where the residential streets were going to go. And we're just not in a position at this time to bring it forward. But that's what the rezoning to the R1 is for. It's to allow single-family residential to go. And as Taylor indicated at the very top, the extension of C1 zoning is to enable a longer building at a diagonal so that you can have a C1, sort of a strip mall kind of retail use at that area. Again, because staff raises today the question of gasoline sales in a C1, which is perfectly legal today. I mean, if, if all this went away, they could build a gas station tomorrow in the place, given the site plan and all the other stuff. We don't want a gas station there. We think we can develop this as something that will fit into this area very nicely. And we're going to be building single-family residential to the west. We can't afford to do anything that's going to mess up that single family to the west. So we think that banning gasoline sales on that parcel, as well as the parcel that's not in front of you this evening, is going to be something we can work out. I'm going to turn it over to Samir now to go through the presentation. Obviously, he or I can answer any questions at some point when you raise them. We've got a number of people from the applicant here in the front row. But we're not going to bring everybody up. We, I think staff has explained what our needs are. I've tried to explain in greater detail why we're doing what we're doing. Our hope is that we are building something that the city and the neighborhood and everybody who sees it will be able to use and enjoy and not be afraid of. Ultimately, when all this is done, we think this could be a $35 million investment in the city. This is going to be a very busy corner. It's going to have something commercial. We think what we're proposing is going to be the right thing. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Samir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and the Commission. My name is Samir Kolcarney, and I'm the Director of Design for Bush Construction, who are the design-build partners on this project. With Greg having adequately captured the intent and giving an overview, I'm here to kind of paint that picture into a probable vision. Bush has entered this partnership to promote quality design for this development. Keeping in mind the high level of interest from all sides, we felt the need to initiate a concept for this property showcasing its appeal once fully built. This concept also identifies potential end users that we are either aspiring for or have engaged in some early discussions. Our approach to design has been cohesive and contemporary, that is contextually appropriate, ties well with the nearby neighborhoods, and one that creates a proud new landmark for the community. The slide that you're seeing right now, this is a conceptual layout that is developed in collaboration with Townsend Engineering, who are civil engineering partners. There are two entries, as you can see, one to the north from Forest Grove and to the east from Devil's Glen Road. Walking through the site, you can see a cluster of townhomes to the south and skirting the southwest boundary of this property. These would serve as a transition from single-family homes proposed for Valley Winds. The utility easement runs north-south, is being left open with no permanent structures, and includes a dedicated playfield between the townhomes. The northwest side of the site is planned to be a multi-tenant retail that falls in the category of approved users for C1 zoning, like Greg mentioned. The center, north, and east sections of the site is planned to be a group of C2 commercial establishments. For instance, a coffee shop to the east, a corner market to the northeast, a two-tenant retail, and a restaurant to its west. Speaking of which, we are currently engaged in discussions with a favorite Bettendorf Mexican restaurant for their second location on this lot. The central location is being evaluated for an office or some form of commercial entity from the approved users for C2 zoning. We are intending to go above and beyond when it comes to greening this development. Keeping that intent, we wish to highlight the landscaped berms and the meandering sidewalk along the east boundary, complementing the other side of what Devil's Glen already possesses. Can we go to the next slide? Thank you. This is a drone view looking from northeast that captures the entire development. As you can see, the townhomes, the coffee shop, the restaurant, the multi-tenant retail, and the to-be-determined commercial entity in the center. Next slide. In the next few slides, you will see 3D renderings that showcase the aesthetic appeal and the style of development that we plan to bring on board. Going from east and around the site, this, here is a concept of a 3,000 square feet coffee shop with a drive-through serving window. Next slide. A 10,000 square feet corner market such as a Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh, which is a combination of food mart and quick needs. This lot could also be the cornerstone of the development, demanding a higher level of aesthetic attention. Next slide. With C2 zoning allowing for a restaurant that is larger than 3,500 square feet, we are contemplating a 5,000 to 6,000 square feet sit-down restaurant with a possible patio for outdoor seating. Again, we are in early discussions with a local favorite Mexican restaurant looking for a second location on Forest Grove. Next slide. To the northwest, we are envisioning a multi-tenant retail that complies with the approved users as specified in C1 zoning. The units are divided into 2,000 square feet modules, so about six tenants, give or take. This lot needs its own identity and adequate parking, and hence faces Forest Grove Road. As you can see, we are following an aesthetic theme for this commercial- As you can see, we are following an aesthetic theme for this commercial side of this development that is unified in many ways and will govern, will be governed by exterior design guidelines and covenants. Next slide. These are duplex and triplex two-story townhomes that are meant to be owner-occupied. They come with three-to-four-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths with high-end finishes that would put their price range well above $400,000. These have a character of their own, yet blend in with the overall development that is planned. Next slide. Finally, we want to highlight the streetscape, especially along Devil's Glen, that would, for the most part, mimic what is already done along the east side to give adequate privacy and a visual appeal that would blend in with the neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Thank you, thank you for your time. We'll answer any questions.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, audience participation.
Good evening, members of the Plan and Zone Commission. My name is Michael Malloy. I'm an attorney who has offices at 2535 Tech Drive here in town. And I'm here tonight to represent Dr. Alan Dirks, who resides at 6549 Blackberry Lane and other Blackberry Lane residents whose residential homes are directly located to the east of this site. And I also want to applaud you folks for taking the time to do this work tonight in this very complicated case that you have before you. As shown by the maps, first of all, we have vacant land here. And as shown by the existing maps, the proposed rezoning is surrounded on both the east, the south, and the west by single-family residential homes that have assessed values in the $500,000 to $1 million range. The city has approved, of course, these previous subdivisions for the development of these high-priced residential, single-family homes in this location. I am here to, tonight, to tell you that this is the wrong location for this particular proposal, which is a primarily commercial proposed use. Presently, there is no commercial use that is existing in this immediate area. Currently, there is no commercial development located south of Forest Grove Drive between Middle Road on the east side and Utica Ridge Road on the west side. The neighbors in this area oppose this commercial development, and I don't believe there is any at all support in the neighborhood for this rezoning. And I'm going to ask for any of the Betendorf citizens who have attended this meeting and are here tonight, who are opposing this rezoning, to please stand or raise your hand. Thank you. As you can see tonight, there is almost unanimous opposition to this rezoning from these property owners and taxpayers of the city of Betendorf who live closest to this site. There is no necessity to rezone this property to the proposed commercial designation in the way the applicant is proposing. It's too intense. And there is no necessity for the commission to take any action until the Betendorf land use maps have been amended. This makes no sense. It's important to note that the city of Betendorf has designated this area presently as parks and recreation space. That's a fact, ladies and gentlemen. It's in the comprehensive plan. And only if future land use plans are amended, as shown in the comprehensive plan, should any proposed rezoning be considered by this commission. The city council wisely chose to designate this area six years ago with a parks and open space designation. And that is entirely logical because there were multiple baseball parks on this site for many years earlier than that. Therefore, parks and recreation space was a logical land use designation. This proposal would change the present configuration to a commercial use that is abutting residential property on all three sides, east, west, and south of this development. It's the wrong location for this proposal. This is a overall 15-acre rezoning that you folks should look at as a package, as the city attorney has already indicated to you. The proposed rezoning will devalue the current residential properties of the surrounding neighborhood residential property owners and homeowners that live there with their families. The rezoning will create additional street congestion and traffic problems at the intersection of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Grove Drive. We are here to ask your careful consideration of this proposal because we believe that it will negatively impact the residential neighborhood as well as the city of Davenport, city of Betendorf for logical development in the future. We are asking the Plan and Zone Commission to recommend denial on the cases with the case number 23-024, excuse me. Case number 23-017, which is a rezoning from a C1 neighborhood, commercial district, to an R1, single-family district. That is what this whole area, we believe, should be developed in the future as, as an R1 district. Accordingly, this commission only can decide, of course, what it has in front of it. And what it has in front of it, we are requesting that the commission deny the other proposed request. Now, there are numerous other people, of course, who want to address the commission regarding this issue, and I'm going to now turn the microphone over to them. And I would conclude by saying that City Attorney Curran hit it on the head earlier when he said, when you look at a rezoning, you look at what is in the best interest of the city as a whole. This rezoning is not in the best interest of the city as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'll turn it over to other speakers now.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Fuller. I live at 6559 Eagle Ridge Road around the corner, and I'm an avid cyclist and runner. And I absolutely love the path along Forest Grove Road and along Devil's Glen. It's awesome. And I can't imagine putting in something like this and wrecking that path. I mean, it's amazing. And I think I'm proud to be in Betendorf. I'm proud to have the paths that we have, and I hope that they just keep expanding. You know, we have to have safe places for runners and cyclists, and I feel like doing something like this is a problem. You know, it's just, you have to watch every time you cross anyway, and then you're going to multiply the traffic in and out of that space for people. And I do have a question. Is it one intersection that you're going to add in there? Because what's going to end up happening is traffic will be backed up on Forest Grove Road if there's only one intersection there on, that you're adding. I think that's a huge issue.
The concept plans up there with two, it shows.
I don't see the second one.
Forest Grove, sorry, yes, one on Forest Grove, one on Middle.
Yeah.
Or Devil's Glen.
Yeah. So I mean, that to me seems ridiculous when you're looking at all those businesses in there and a coffee shop. I mean, if you think about the coffee shops, you know, they're blocking traffic and lined up in parking lots to get their coffee. But I just hope you can look at this from more of a, a use management sort of thing. And I would say for a runner and a cyclist, the use of that wonderful path that you've developed will really be negated, you know? And the other thing is, is if we're really looking at planning and this buffering sort of concept, if you just mirror the neighborhood that you have on the right side and mirror that on the left side, to me, that works. And I don't really understand that. And I also think about, I run by those giant two homes that actually are backed up away from the street on Forest Grove, and I can't imagine how those people feel to think that all of a sudden they built these amazing houses and they're going to have a strip mall and a Mexican restaurant. I mean, if you just go down a little bit, we've got that wonderful Betplex. And I mean, that place is exploding. And so I just think like, is it necessary? Is it needed? All those things. So just, I ask you to really, really consider the point of putting this sort of thing in the middle of where we've got a school a couple blocks away and families and, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, who's next?
Good evening. Is it still evening? My name is Ken Golden. I have a house at 3895 Lakeview Court, which is in the Copper Ridge addition. After living in Davenport for nearly my entire life, my wife Donna and I moved here two years ago to Betendorf. We invested in that development because we believe Betendorf has an excellent commitment to consistent, long-term planning and land use strategies. There's no doubt in my mind that this careful planning and use of land is a key to the continuing population growth in Betendorf. Now, we understand that the staff makes a recommendation based on, is this legal? Can it go forward under our rules? That does not mean that you need to agree with the staff recommendation. Tonight, you're going to hear from other residents. You've heard from one lawyer and others who are, you know, opposed to this rezoning for a lot of reasons: safety, traffic, environment, others. In fact, there were 32 cars lined up at that intersection when I left tonight.
Forty-one.
So we're seeing a lot of traffic, and we see no plan at this point to fix that piece of it, let alone throw in this huge commercial development. But let me go back for a minute to the staff report that says there were mistakes made concerning the future land use map and that we should ignore those city documents that were on file for six years. And it just seems to a lot of us that that's a rather convenient thing now to say, rather than for those of us who bought a home or built a home in an area based partially on what was on record for that land. C1, low-density, neighborhood commercial, and potential land use for park and rec. I happen to be one of the families who built those ball diamonds for a rather short-term time, but most of those families hoped that would always be green space. Now, we weren't the owners, obviously, and we had no control over that. But it was a great area for recreation, and we made our decision in Betendorf to move into the house that we now live in, based partially on what was on those maps. And that was going to be low-density and potential parks. Now, throw that park thing out for a minute and just talk about density. Because you heard the folks in favor of this and the staff talk about our number one concern was the gas station. Well, if that was number one, number two is density. That is a very busy intersection, and it will continue to be so, as you heard, and we have dozens of people who, you heard from the bicyclists and runners and walkers, all up and down that area. You also heard, or haven't heard yet, but you will, all the children walking on Forest Grove to go to school. Now, we're going to increase, I don't know how much this property is going to increase traffic, but is going to be significant. Where right down the road, we have areas in Betendorf that would be much better suited for this sort of density. I believe your role is to look at zoning decisions that make Betendorf a premier city. With that in view, it's not only the families in the surrounding neighborhoods who should be concerned with this decision, but every current and future resident of Betendorf, all who look to the city to maintain a consistent approach to land use, an approach that has created desirable neighborhoods and business districts that are so attractive that Betendorf continues to grow in population as a desirable place to live and raise a family. Other cities make decisions that are short-term in nature simply because it builds tax base. We don't need that hodgepodge approach in Betendorf. This is shoehorning a commercial development into what is a residential area and should remain a residential area. We urge you to continue Betendorf's strong legacy of careful, thoughtful, and appropriate zoning for residential and commercial development. We ask that you decline this zoning request.
Thank you, Ken.
Good evening. My name is Janet Morales, and I reside at 3360 Crow Lake Drive. I oppose the rezoning and agree what my previous neighbors have spoken. My family and I are new to Betendorf. We've only lived here since July of 2021, and we chose this home because we liked the neighborhood community and its desirable location away from the hustle and bustle of commercial businesses, while still conveniently located and easily accessible to all the businesses that support my family's needs. My children can safely cross Devil's Glen Road to walk to Hopewell Elementary, and as a family, we utilize the walking bike paths. Rezoning to allow a higher density usage would have detrimental impact to these activities, from navigating traffic entering and exiting the businesses while on the path to crossing the street to access the path. I've already noticed an increase in traffic with the temporary Forest Grove construction. And it's been really challenging to cross Devil's Glen Road. These are not the residents of the area. And they are using Devil's Glen as a pass-through, adding to traffic exceeding the 35 mile per hour speed limit and making it difficult to exit the neighborhood. With the increased commercial density with the proposed rezone, this volume of traffic would become normal. Rezoning would not enrich the quality of the neighborhood community and would take away from being a premier city that attracted us to Bettendorf. I urge you, the planning committee, to recommend against this rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janet.
Hi, my name is Terry Donard. I live at 6560 Blackbird Lane. I don't want to waste anybody's time here tonight because frankly, I didn't think we'd be here this late anyway. I just want to reiterate what everyone before me has said. We moved, my family and I, we have three children. We moved from Leclerc three years ago. We moved to the area five years ago. We lived on a commercial adjacent home. And every morning, my kids almost got hit by speeding cars, traveling super fast and not following the rules of the road. And we moved to Bettendorf to get away from that. We wanted to be on the bike path. And putting this in that corner, as everyone has said, there have been multiple near accidents every single day. It takes me, as I'm teaching my 14-year-old twin boys to drive, about 15 minutes to get out of that intersection at Devil's Glen and Forest Grove. And that's on a Saturday when there's not much traffic because that's the only time I'll take them out. I really urge you to vote no tonight. I know you can't look at any other proposals, but please vote no.
Thank you, Terry.
Hello, my name is Jared Stein. I live at 3400 Crow Lake Drive. I live to the southwest and below this development. Thank you to the committee. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to the developer. I know you worked hard on this and I apologize ahead of time for the things I'm going to say in terms of my concerns, but they are my concerns. And I appreciate everybody's time. So I oppose this rezoning and future land use amendment in its entirety. All seven hearings, obviously, apply to all hearings. My family and I moved here in six years ago, 2016 or so. And that whole space is farm right now. It currently was just, I think, you know, up until today, it's been farm. As of the 2017 land use, what I know is that it was parks and open space. Digging back in, Taylor, thank you so much because we did see in 1996 that it was partially set to C1. I want to be clear about how much was actually set to C1, however. There was 7.34 acres that were zoned as C1 and then 8.32 that were zoned as transitional C5. I know that that is adjusted, but I just wanted to keep that in mind because clearly there was consideration that we needed to have significant transition between the C1 and the residential, the R1 neighborhoods that were being built. And that was all documented in the city ordinance. Okay, so in terms of the concern, and I know that the best interest of the city as a whole is very important. And a couple of things were brought up that I do want to agree with. Obviously, the density is significant. This is a lot of development happening in a very small space. It's also development that's happening right in the middle of residential, both existing and planned future. So we have this kind of disconnect in terms of the overall, how this fits into the neighborhood. I have specific concerns about the lights that would come about. I have concerns about the hours of operation that would exist for these businesses. I have personally significant concerns regarding the water that is going to come from this development. There was discussions in previous hearings. That pond right there that you see to the left, the big one with the little sticky uppy thing, that is, as far as I'm aware, I know it's a private pond, but it's currently managed by the developer of the land surrounding it. And it's not maintained. It had a fountain. The fountain broke. We've been working back and forth and they just never got a working fountain. It has these overgrowing, like tall grass. We've been told that there are concerns with the pond. Now, we're proposing another detention pond below. And I have concerns personally that that water, if not well-maintained and not appropriately managed, will end up back in my backyard, which it already does on big, any big rainy day, I get like an entire flood in the back of my backyard. And we had, we worked really hard to make sure that water stayed out of our basement. If that continues, it's going to encroach upon my home. Okay, so I'll keep my, the rest of my statements brief. But I do want to specifically reference the zoning. Because if the question here is about amending the future land use map and rezoning, then we kind of have to consider all of that as a whole. So in terms of the change, it's, again, it's rather complex. But if we just go back to how it was in terms of the original C1, what it's zoned as today, that's no rezoning, then it's really just a question about amending the future land use map so the development can occur. If there was a future land use map to address, it would, it would have to be, I guess, the C1 compatible future land use. So looking at the actual, like, the 1115B, there are a couple of specific, sorry, notes about what's expected in those circumstances. And so the first one was that this rezoning confirms to the future land use map and the comprehensive, in the comprehensive plan and that the amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. And that's so, that's the 111513B, one and two. If the responses are not in the affirmative for both, then you have to deny it. So that's obviously why we're dealing with such a complex issue here. But there's more to it. And there's a couple of statements beyond that that I really have concerns with in terms of how we're handling this. So first off, it says that the subject property after the city council approval of the requested zoning will be designed so as to permit the characteristic of said zoning. The potential externalities and applicable performance standards have been adequately considered. I'm shortening it. As you noted, I have significant concerns and those have not been adequately considered. I suspect that others would as well. Part of that is also to consider the pattern of development that has occurred surrounding the subject property. If you look around it, it's all residential. Even the new stuff that's going in north of Forest Grove is all residential. So I ask this committee to please consider all of this. A final statement here, seven. The proposed amendment is in the public interest and not solely in the interest of the applicant. I assure you, this is not in the public interest. It has impact on the pedestrian crossing. It has impact on the neighbors. And I want to end my statements with some specific concerns because I think that we've heard a little bit about this body as considering everything. Well, there's only, they're only showing you portion of this. But it goes further over to the west. There's more development. And so we've heard that there is consideration about having to have an entrance and exit to this new development that's being considered, not in front of the body today. But I ask this body to consider as a whole. If you approve this today, then what happens is they start building and there will not be an ability to connect that residential neighborhood with the entrance and exit that's being proposed. Well, the challenge is that then they're going to have to have another exit. So now we're going to have three intersections, all given this one development. And it's going to significantly impact the neighborhood because either it's going to be not lit intersections, you're going to have accidents. We've, I know personally of two accidents that have happened turning into our neighborhood. That is people going south on Devil's Glen, making a right into the Crow Lake Drive and have been rear-ended hard. I'm talking about the people behind them had to be going 40 or 45 miles per hour and crashed into the car and moved it so it was a different direction. I didn't even know what was going on. So all of this considered, I ask that this committee take back and say, you know what? You want to reconsider this whole thing? You want to make it complicated? Let's, let's look at it all right now as a whole and understand how it's all going to tie together. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jared. Yes, sir.
My name is Alan Dirck, 6549 Blackberry Lane, Bettendorf. I just want to point out to the planning and zoning committee here that if you just go to the north side of the intersection of Devil's Glen and Forest Grove Road, it's zone C1 in each side. If you look at your map, they're on the left. And on our side and so forth, where you're trying to propose a zoning, it's all residential on all three sides. Now, across the road, you have the C1 where you can do whatever you want to do with it. Down the road, you have the Betplex, all the gas stations, this and that. They have a four-way through. We only have three here. Okay, we come to a T almost there at the end of Devil's Glen. If they want to put the commercial, go over on the other side where you've got it zoned. Or you could actually go down to a really good intersection, which would be Utica Ridge and Forest Grove and go do what you want to do there. It'd be better for the businesses, everything. But it's truly, that would be the only place on the south side of Forest Grove that has any commercial development at all. And we're surrounded by three ways with residential. I'm just, this is not a good plan for that area. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Alan. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Kim and I'm a resident of Valley Winds. I live at 6552 Blackbird Lane. This is on the west side of the proposed development. My husband Brian and I both grew up in the Quad Cities, attended Bettendorf High School and chose to settle in this neighborhood. Once we had kids of our own, next year, all four of our kids will attend Hopewell Elementary School. I'm here today to express my opposition to the zoning request, specifically the designation of C2, because I feel that C2 is inappropriate development for this residential area. As you probably know, the site development is about .9 miles from Hopewell Elementary School. But that's only if you are doing it by car and driving it. If you look at the map point to point, or as the crow flies, or as a child would walk, we're actually only talking about point two to point three miles from this corner to the back of the Hopewell Elementary School playground. And so I just want that to be on the table and to take that into consideration today when we're talking about how busy and how dense this development could potentially be. I also think it's important to note that in the Pleasant Valley School District, they do not provide buses for families who live within one mile of the school district. And so that means that hundreds of schoolchildren are walking from Copper Ridge and from Valley Winds to Hopewell Elementary School every day because there is no bus service. And so in order to keep traffic reasonable in the parking lots, a lot of families choose to walk to school every day. So I personally believe that allowing this to be a C2 development will create serious safety concerns, especially for those of us who have small children who are crossing Devil's Glen every day. At this time, we have two to three crossing guards and sometimes a police officer that comes to help make sure that our children can safely cross Devil's Glen in the morning and in the afternoon. And so I want that concern to be on the table this evening in addition to the other concerns that have been raised by my friends and neighbors this evening. I also want to note that we did create a change.org petition to try to get an idea in our neighborhood of how many people were opposed to this development. And it has over 500 signatures. Obviously, not all of those people could be at this five-hour meeting today. But I do want to note how many people are opposed in these neighborhoods to this plan. I would also like to point out a personal concern that I have. I know we all have personal concerns based on where our home falls in this area. And I have a personal concern about an issue that was just brought up by Jared regarding the street alignment. So I understand that today we're talking about voting to approve all seven of these plans and that down the road, there are many, many other meetings where we will come and potentially discuss things like water and lighting and things like that. But it's very frustrating as a resident to be told that today, quote, "They're not prepared to bring forward the street alignment" when they're asking you to vote to support all seven of these changes. As somebody who lives on a street that may be realigned due to this development, that's really frustrating as a resident and a taxpayer. When we originally, a few months ago, were given the materials that first proposed this development and we were invited to the meeting by the developer, there was a new street proposed called Jake's Lane. Jake's Lane would greatly change the flow of traffic in my neighborhood, Valley Winds. Originally, Blackbird Lane was to connect to Cardinal. And then Cardinal was going to connect to Forest Grove. So then when the Jake's Lane proposal came about, that was totally redrawn. The new proposed Blackbird Court was going to be coming and connecting to Cardinal. And then Cardinal was becoming to connect to Blackbird. And then Blackbird was going to become this new road called Jake's Lane. All that is to say that it's very frustrating that this could be proposed, or could be approved today. And we still don't even have an idea of what the street alignment will be that will be brought forward, that will change the entire flow of traffic in our residential neighborhood. I just want to end by saying, thank you for your time. I understand that this developer has listened to our counsel of our concerns regarding no longer having a gas station. However, as a resident, I would just like to say that just because there's no longer a gas station does not mean that we feel that C2 is an appropriate designation for our neighborhood. We still oppose this development, even though they did listen to our concerns about not having a gas station. Bettendorf is a premier city. And I think that to be a premier city, we have to do premier city planning. We have to keep our neighborhoods as neighborhoods. We have to keep our residential neighborhoods as residential. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Who's next?
My name is Dennis Bland. I live at 6311 Cattail. And I'm not going to be directly impacted by this, except when I try to leave the subdivision, which tonight, I was the one who yelled out 41 cars. As I was coming home at 4:45 this afternoon, Forest Grove going south on Devil's Glen, there were 41 cars backed up at 4:45 at that stop sign with another 24, because I pulled over to the side and counted them, that were going to pile in the rest of them that were waiting for that stop sign. And I understand that eventually Devil's Glen will be a four-lane road. And, you know, the sooner the better because traffic out there is ridiculous. School hours are particularly troublesome in the morning. If you try to go south on Devil's Glen, good luck because there are kids trying to cross the road. There are people using that as a thoroughfare with Middle Road being down. And I understand that that will alleviate some of the traffic too. But the fact remains, and we've heard tonight, that this will be a major arterial route, which it is, as is Forest Grove. I drive Forest Grove all the time. I take it over to Veterans Parkway. I work out at the Y in north Davenport. So it's very convenient, but it's also very busy. It was also noted that there are no other commercial developments on Forest Grove Road between us and Utica, I guess, and that's true. So why here when we've got Betplex just down the street, you know, less than a mile away, has lots of retail out there, lots of opportunity for shops to go in out there? So I don't understand why all of a sudden we have to cram a commercial site on that spot. Doesn't make any sense to me when there's already retail space available at the Betplex. The other thing that I just wanted to say is Bettendorf likes to market itself as a premier city. Well, nothing says premier like residential neighborhoods lit up like an IED truck stop at night. Look at the subdivision across from Betplex. And how would you like to own one of those homes that at night looks like a truck stop? And so that's another concern that I have is with an additional commercial development near our subdivisions. Want to see what the lighting is going to be like. Understand they probably won't have ball diamond lighting that stays on until 2 o'clock in the morning. And that's a whole different thing. But still, there's going to be additional traffic, additional lighting. Does not fit with the neighborhoods around it. It's totally incongruous with the neighborhoods around. And so therefore, I would just ask you to please reconsider the rezoning request and deny it.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
Hi, my name is Sarah Mayfield and I live at 6515 Blackbird Lane. And I just want to reiterate the comments about the biker cyclist, anyone who knows. me knows I spend a lot of time on the bike paths and walking in that area. I walk my kid to Hopewell every single morning and pick him up every single day unless it's pouring down rain. Um, and, and traffic is crazy, and it's very dangerous already, and it's going to get a lot worse with, with a lot more traffic. Um, my other issue is, is I also pick up garbage on Devil's Glen. And if you add, it's not a convenience store, but a fast and fresh, the garbage is going to be crazy, because there's wind and people just throw things out. And I already pick up probably two bags of garbage a week, and I don't, I don't have room in my garbage can for more. So I hope you consider just not rezoning this area. We, we understand that it's zoned at what it is, but we, we are asking that you keep it that. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Who else? Last call. All right. Close the public hearing. Public hearing will be closed. Okay. Now...
So, Mr. Chairman, I, just in order to get through the, the other six public hearings, I, I would recommend, if something's the commission, but that you table the commission action on case number twenty-three dash zero-one-three.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay. I think we have a motion and a second to cable, table case twenty-three dash zero-one-three.
Four.
Four?
Can I ask a question first?
Chris, you may want to clarify that you were just tabling till later in the meeting. We are not tabling till later date.
I don't want to be one that's presumptuous, but should that one get turned down along with the next one, then none of the rest of it matters.
That's, that's correct. Yeah, if you, if you don't, if, if you don't, if you don't approve, uh, or recommend for approval the land use amendment, then you can't rezon those. That is, they are, the rezonings are contingent on that. I just think, but we are, but we are, I think if we get through all of the, the public hearings, get all of the comments heard, then you can, then you will take the matter sequentially separately. Does that make sense?
Well, what I was saying is if we were to vote on the first one right away, or discuss it, vote on it, and it gets turned down, the rest of them don't matter.
Yeah, and we're not going to do that. We're going to table each one, then...
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
You're right. That's still coming. That, that issue is still coming. Yep.
So you have a, yeah, go ahead.
We have a motion and a second to table the commission action for twenty-three dash zero-one-three.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's tabled.
So we need to table twenty-three oh two-one.
No, you need to open.
I need to open and close it.
We only had a public hearing.
We need to do the public hearings for each of these.
So bear with us while we do the administrative work here. So, um, I will ask for twenty-three oh-two-one. Have we had an affidavit of publication?
Yes.
Okay. Then we will open the public hearing for twenty-three dash zero-two-one. Is there anyone that would like to speak with regard to twenty-three dash zero-two-one? Is that a yes over there? That's a go-home. All right. Now, is he heading for the podium?
Is it assured that our comments are on each public?
Yes, sir.
They are cross-fired and part of the record of each of these public hearings.
Yep. Okay, I see no input for that. Then I will close the public hearing for twenty-three dash zero-two-one.
So now, I would, to be consistent, we would have a, a motion to table the commission action for case number twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table temporarily case twenty-three dash zero-two-one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, twenty-three zero-two-one is tabled. All right, then we're going to deal with twenty-three oh-one-four. Is there an affidavit of publication?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then we will open the public hearing for case twenty-three zero-one-four, rezoning. Is there any input from the audience regarding twenty-three zero-one-four for the public hearing? No. All right, I will close the public hearing.
I move to table two-three dash zero-one-four. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table case twenty-three dash zero-one-four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Then we have case twenty-three oh-one-seven. Is there an affidavit of publication?
Yes.
Okay, I will open the public hearing for case twenty-three oh-one-seven. Any comments relative for the public hearing for twenty-three oh-one-seven? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for twenty-three.
I move to table case two-three dash zero-one-seven.
Wow, you're way ahead of me there. Right, there's a motion and a second to table case twenty-three oh-one-seven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, twenty-three oh-one-seven is tabled. Now, twenty-three, case twenty-three dash zero-two-two, uh, is there an affidavit of publication?
Yes.
There is. We will open the public hearing. Any comments regarding twenty-three oh-two-two? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I move to table case two-three dash zero-two-two.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to table case twenty-three dash zero-two-two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Twenty-three dash zero-two-two is tabled. Okay, case twenty-three dash zero-two-three. Do we have an affidavit of publication?
Yes.
Okay, having a publication notice, affidavit of publication, we will open the meeting for a public hearing for twenty-three oh-two-three. Any comments relative to twenty-three oh-two-three? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing for twenty-three oh-two-three. Do we have a motion to table?
I have moved to table case two-three dash zero-two-three.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve tabling case twenty-three dash zero-two-three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, twenty-three dash zero-two-three is tabled, which takes us to... Do we do the same thing for twenty-three oh-two-four?
Do the public hearing.
Then we'll do it. All right, we're going to, is there a affidavit of publication for case twenty-three dash zero-two-four?
Yes.
Okay, I will open the meeting, public hearing for twenty-three oh-two-four. Any comments relative to twenty-three oh-two-four? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing for twenty-three oh-two-four.
So at this point, you have in front of you, and still on the agenda, the commission action for twenty-three dash zero-two-four, and you have tabled the, uh, commission action for the other cases. So what I would recommend is that there be a motion to take from the table the commission action for twenty-three dash zero-one-three, twenty-three dash zero-two-one, twenty-three dash zero-one-four, twenty-three dash zero-one-seven, twenty-three dash zero-two-two, and twenty-three dash zero-two-three. And if that motion is made and seconded and then approved, you would then have all of the commission actions back in front of you.
So moved. One motion?
Yes.
Okay. So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to take off the table, or to bring back on the table, all the cases we tabled. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, this is real. Oh, same sign. Okay, we have everything back on the table. Sorry. We don't get paid by the motion, just so you know, okay? We don't get paid at all. All right, so now we are at the point where we can have official discussion on what's been presented by the council or commission.
Can I, can I just have some questions answered about traffic issues, safety issues, walking paths, just in general, some of the concerns from the neighbors? Can we just hear from the city's perspective how we proceed in these situations?
I think the biggest thing, uh, to get right off the bat is the fact that traffic right now is probably three times what Devil's Glen normally carries.
Because of the detour.
Because of the detour. So by closing Middle Road, we had to detour roughly twelve-thousand cars a day. And I'm all but certain, just in driving that, just like I, I've heard tonight, watching on the cameras, we have that, I'm going to say about two-thirds of that traffic right now is taking Devil's Glen. Uh, we're not seeing nearly the traffic that's going out to the east and around to Creswell, um, compared to the, the volumes that are taking Devil's Glen. So we have to consider that somewhat of anomaly. You know, you're not going to triple traffic by bringing in a, a fifteen-acre development of any size right there. Um, but it, again, it is, as Taylor stated in the beginning of, um, the presentation, these will be two of our five busiest roads in town. This intersection will be a top five, uh, at some point. Um, so we do have the traffic signal plan. Uh, unfortunately, these, with the lead times that we have for everything, we've already started design, uh, the funding is allocated, but you've got lead times of forty to fifty weeks for the equipment right now. So that will be installed this time next year, um, you know, late summer, or early summer at the latest, we hope. Uh, but that will happen next year. Um, Devil's Glen also is scheduled for widening right now. Uh, it's in twenty-twenty-six in the community improvement program. Uh, that fluctuates each year. That gets moved around by city council depending on available funding and priorities that could potentially get moved up if it's needed to. But right now, that is, uh, that is programmed. Um, it's not in the unfunded.
What design?
That would be a four-lane from Forest Grove down to Fifty-third. So the remainder of, of the sections through there. There are some sections that we know are, are technically three or four lanes because of the various turn lanes and the configurations of, of way, the way it's been built out. Um, in terms of the rec trail, uh, yep, uh, we absolutely would be adding another crossing, uh, and potentially two, depending on what happens with the single family to the west there. Um, the question regarding adding another access point for the R-one component, uh, that they are not bringing forward. So I think that's the, probably the biggest key right now. They're not asking for consideration on the R-one. Um, there's no plats, there's no construction plans, there is no consideration by the city right now for the R-one, um, that's north of the existing Valley Winds, eighth, ninth, tenth, uh, tenth additions there. Um, dating back to the original preliminary plat, uh, there was, just as Taylor has, there, there always was a second entrance. Um, I'll say second, although there's multiple entrances into the entire addition, but there was an entrance planned of Forest Grove, and now where that eventually ends up could change. When that drawing was done, nothing existed north of Forest Grove. So if we end up with a traffic conflict of left turns, for example, that we talked about earlier on a, a different project, um, engineering could request, uh, that that needs to be adjusted accordingly because of what's now, um, the Forest Grove crossing additions. So we will consider that when that is brought forward. But yes, you do have the potential now for two more crossings, uh, of the rec trail. The distance between them, depending on where that falls, would be almost, I just measured it, would be almost identical to what the distance is between Eagle Ridge and, I'm going to get the wrong one. Golf Course Road. So those next two crossings to the west of you, you have two residential crossings there. I realize we'd be talking residential and potentially commercial. They're about a thousand feet apart. This would be roughly nine hundred feet apart if it was shown as, as there. So yes, you will be adding them. But again, this is a rec trail on what will end up being the busiest street in town. We've got rec trail that crosses along Middle Road, the entire length of it, and many, many more crossings. Um, you do have them on, on Devil's Glen that cross side streets. You're going to have them. That's the intent of putting those trails where they're going to benefit the most people in terms of service them, but the access to that requires crossing city streets. There's, there's no way around it.
I think part of the concern is the idea of making it commercial brings about more traffic.
Sure.
How is, how do you respond to that?
Ultimately, we can only treat it as a, a normal crossing, uh, just a crossing period. Um, we do, we've been trying to upgrade some of the crossings. Um, you know, the rapid flash beacons that you'll see at some of the busier ones have kind of become our new standard, um, to the question of the, the Devil's Glen crossing for Hopewell School. Uh, actually got an email on that yesterday from Superintendent Spellog. We're going to be looking at some changes there, talk with the, the police department. Um, so, thank you, Struves, going back one. Um, so that, that is something that, that we've been trying to look at. We have that kind of crossing out at Forest Grove Park right now. That could be something, if, if it's intense enough, that we may have to consider. But physically, from a construction standpoint, you cannot do anything. It's either you close the trail or you put an entrance in there. Um, so we do put the stop signs on trails, you know, and we would hope that people are, you know, um, doing their best to be as safe as they can on them, but you're going to have crossings.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on what you're saying for the school and keeping the children safe walking in that area?
Some additional signage, um, replacing the existing, most likely replacing the existing flashing beacons that look like the old traffic signals there. The new ones are LED, they surround the entire site. They bring a much bigger, um, percentage. But from a construction standpoint, other than relocating it, uh, right now, there would be nothing else that we could take on. But even doing that, that with potentially some, uh, pre-warrant signage and maybe some additional lane markings as well. But we, as the resident did say, we do post crossing guards there as well. Now, that, that's a convenience crossing, quite frankly, because it's a mid-block crossing. It's not something that we would prefer to be there, but because of the school coming in and the, the neighborhoods around there, that was put in.
How do you respond to the, um, assertion that south of Forest Grove, there are very few commercial areas from Middle Road to, which one, which was it?
Utica.
Utica. Thanks. Yep.
So that's a fact.
Yes, I know. But I mean, how do you respond to that when it's south of Forest Grove?
What happens in just kind of general land use pattern of development is rooftop spring commercial. So if you think of this, uh, if you think of kind of a ladder of east-west roads, stair stepping up Bettendorf from, from south to north, and, and the, uh, side bars of that ladder are Devil's Glen Road and Middle Road, we've been filling in slowly residential among all of those. And those corners, we've got back-to-back cases now, those corners have stayed undeveloped, because those are typically reserved for commercial, as shown in our future land use map and our comprehensive plans. So now you're getting to the point where there's enough rooftops that the commercial...
Can't hear you. Can't hear you at all.
No, we can't hear you.
I apologize for that. Thanks for letting me know. So now you're getting to the point where there's enough rooftops that are pushing those commercial, um, corners to develop, and that's really what we're seeing time and time again, right? Rooftops driving commercial at the major intersections.
I would like to add to the, between Forest Grove and, um, so we have Forest Grove, the boundary of the Davenport-Bettendorf border, it's just, just down the street. So much of the land west going to Utica Ridge is the city of Davenport. And, um, so they have evolving land use plans. They go through similar processes. Um, so the developing trends there aren't too dissimilar of what's happening here, um, up being posed here, um, along Utica Ridge, so.
Others from the commission.
Now I have a question.
Yeah.
Taylor, can you bring up one of the aerial photos that show the, the buildings, where the buildings are located? There, it's perfect. So my question is this commercial building or the...
Are you talking to the mic a little more?
Oh, sorry. I scooted it back. Thank you. The building in the upper-left corner, that's the only commercial that directly abuts residential or proposed residential. There isn't any residential there yet. So I think back to the clubhouse. So based upon what's allowed in that building, could there be a bar? And would that bar then be backing up directly to those residential homes?
Yes.
So that, to me, of this whole development, that is the pinch point right there. And we do have a history of problems in that type of a development, and I would hate to see that happen again. Thank you, Greg.
I don't think we have, we have a closed public hearing. Yeah, we can't.
We got the one piece that's not up for debate right now.
Unless the rest of us can get up and speak.
Calm down. He's not going to get up. We're not going to address him. He's going to follow the same rules. We're okay.
If you're asking me a question...
I can ask Chris that question.
Ask Chris. We can, we can do it that way. You, and if somebody else wants to ask a question, we can ask somebody else. But we're, we're closed on the public hearing.
Okay.
So what is the question again? Can a bar, can a bar go?
Right. And I understand we're not talking about that, but it's all part of the big picture.
Can't hear you.
He hasn't talked.
The, Taylor, you know the permitted use...
Taylor, you know the permitted use table better than I do.
Is the question in a C1 area with no restrictions, where I have a lot of restrictions floating around here, a C1 bar is special use permit in, in those districts. So we're adding more zoning into this play. It'd have to be approved by the Board of Adjustment. And that is an individual case-by-case basis with the public hearing.
So potentially, yes.
By special use.
By special use.
That's the piece that's, that's the piece that's not on the table today, right? Because that's already C1.
Well, Barr would still need a special use permit.
Well, I mean, the, the current zoning is C1. It's already C1.
Yeah, that's already C1. That's correct.
Okay. That answers all my questions.
Well, and I, I looked at that too, Ann. And, and one of my concerns was the, the commercial zone, C1 abutting the residential. I guess the, the way I resolved that in my own mind was that the, the developer of the corner is the owner of the residential. So if, if they do something detrimental to the residential property, they did it to themselves. So I don't know if that's a consolation or not, but if somebody went in there with residential, which would be on a timeline that we're looking at after the commercial, they would be buying the residential under full knowledge of what was existing adjacent to them rather than something coming in later after the single-family house had been there for 20 years. Yeah.
Right.
And I will note the each, when you have a different zoning districts adjacent to each other, we have landscape buffers. I think that was brought up in Mr. Beck's presentation. And so if you have a really high intense versus a low intense district, the landscape buffer requirements are higher. C1 to R1, there is required landscape buffers and they're showing, that would be reviewed more in a plat and site plan, but they're showing enough space in there. But you'd still, they're still adjacent to each other.
Can staff address the, the discussion, the, the concept that we were getting feedback on about the, the error we're saying from a staff standpoint on the land use map? So on one hand, I'm seeing, I'm hearing, okay, yep, there's a lot of history there for decades, literally, of that being commercial planned property. And then come along in 2017 and oops, it got marked as park and recreational, but it's still retained a C1 or C5 through the entire parcel for that entire period. So it seems very, as I'm trying to process this, inconsistent that it would not be an error because if it were intended to be park or recreational, it wouldn't have been zoned C1 or C5. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I think the question that you're asking is if we changed the future land use map, why did the city not become a petitioner to change the zoning?
Right.
All of Taylor's research, all of our research collectively finds no reason that we changed that. We, we really believe that was an error because the barnstormers fields were there and the consultant saw what looked like a park and wrote park, not realizing that was a private field that was there temporarily as, as is noted in the site development plan. So Taylor's done a ton of research. I'll turn it back over to him, but he can show you how that came through.
And Mark's exactly right. The, they're not, it's the land use, future land use and the present zoning and the ownership, not a public ownership, it's a private ownership. They weren't consistent across the board. So that was like a red flag. I will note though, the proposals to change future land, this is a future land use amendment. So they're proposing to change the future land use map. This area, now the corners are highlighted in red, but you can look across town, all over town. We've used to have, we have had industrial proposed there. Then it changes to business park. And then it changes to more of medium residential. These are all undeveloped areas. So the land use, as it's a continuum, this comp plan's always a continuum. There's updates, larger updates, but this is a smaller update that's being proposed. So we can look at the past, but really we're, we're discussing is what do you want the future and is that the right thing? So it's, it's good to look. And that's, I'm trying to explain why it became park. But that's based on my research. That's what I've found. But they are proposing and staff is recommending with approval of that proposal to change it. And it's consistent, we think, with the surrounding area.
Yeah.
And what we've learned from some of our training is that land use is a suggestion, but the zoning is legislation.
And zoning is the current law.
Yeah, that's the current law. That's, that's what it's currently zoned.
So those ball diamonds are currently zoned, C1. So it's irrelevant what's on the land use map, really.
For zoning, for the current zoning, correct?
Was it an accurate statement that the city council designated it as parks and open space six years ago? Like intentionally?
I, I, the, the, the city council adopted the map as part of a larger comprehensive plan.
So not specifically?
I would, I would liken it to a Scribner's error, although I don't know if a Scribner's error can be on a map. But you, you can, you can adopt, you can adopt documents that have errors in them. That happens. They're referred to as Scribner's errors. We believe there is a map error in this case.
Okay.
But as Ann said, it's zone C1, which is legislated. It's law. The land use map is just a suggestion.
And I think as Taylor pointed out earlier, if it was the city's intent to turn that into a park, then that would have been in the budget. It would have been in the capital improvement plan. It would have been a lot of places within.
It's never been reflected in any parks document that we can find.
Or, or a purchase officer offer made by the city. Any negotiation for purchase has not occurred.
Okay.
Other questions or comments by the commission?
So because the city doesn't own that land, that was where the error was never readily recognized. There was, there's no way that the city can make the determination.
It's my personal belief that they saw the ball diamonds there. They thought it was a city-owned park and marked it future land use as park.
And nobody caught that when they finalized the map.
So if I'm building a house across the street from there and I'm looking up, I'm like, oh, there's a field across the street. Let me figure out what this is ever going to turn into. What would I have found if I looked online?
Depends on where you looked, but you would.
Would I see it's zoned C1 or would I see it's?
The zoning would have been C1 and the future land use would have been parks and open space.
Depending on when you looked. If you looked after 2017.
Depending on when you look and you said online, so I'm assuming it's more recent than, than older.
Okay.
I mean, again, hypotheticals are hard for staff.
And I will add to the, this happened in 2017.
Yeah.
Copper Ridge was rezoned and developed in the early 2010s. In 2010, this was the future land use map.
What does that show?
Oh, sorry. That shows a, a commercial. It shows commercial and you've got that transitional zone that's like, it's technically office, I think, and office transitional and commercial on the corner. Sorry.
So, so Taylor, I would say based upon that map that you just showed us, when Copper Ridge was developed, that commercial usage was anticipated and is evidenced by a huge berm, a significant berm in both width and height and all aspects of it to screen that residential area from what was proposed as commercial directly across the street.
I was not here at the time, but I would agree that that's a method in logic too.
And when, and when we talked about the previous case tonight and we talked about, Greg gave us a real, several really good examples of progressive development as far as density and usage, whether it's on the land use or on the zoning. He said, and I wrote this down when you said it, Greg, we typically, we, we don't put single-family homes up against arterial roads, which was done in this case, especially at an intersection, which was also done in this case. And so to have residential on that corner would not really be in keeping with our typical development.
And just a footnote on that too, that Copper Ridge was zoned R3. So it, I don't know the history, but it could have been contemplated as more dense housing at the time and then ended up being higher-end single-family. But it's not zoned R1. It was zoned R3.
Right.
Which makes a little more sense sitting next to the C1, C5 across the street. Other questions and comments from the commission?
I would just say even though all that makes sense, it still seems kind of like spotty zoning to put it right there in the middle of everything else that's residential.
That kind of buffer, so I was just going to talk about, we, we went through this big change to the zoning recently. And the whole idea, I'm not saying it was for or against it, but the whole idea was to have small community areas and then kind of blossom out from there. We wanted this exact concept where you would have a few small retail businesses in the middle of a lot of residential, places where the residents around there could actually walk, thus decreasing traffic to these businesses. I'm not saying that, but that is, that is what the city did. They commissioned a study on it. We spent a lot of time talking about it. That's where we come up with the UMI and all this other stuff. The whole idea was to put businesses, smaller commercial businesses, not big gas stations, which I completely agree don't belong there. But the idea was to put these in there, much like we see now at Middle Road in Crow Creek, which I don't know, I've driven by there a few times and I almost don't even realize that you have commercial businesses sitting right on the corner because they blended them in so nice with the neighborhood. But that was the idea with the last zoning, which all of that was done after Copper Ridge was put in and the zone or the, and the, the park item ended up on that land use map. Basically, what I'm looking at there, when it's all done, should be very nice for the area. And it could be, I hate to hear this, but it could be much, much worse if you have different people that get into these positions that are just in favor of putting in gas stations and things like that. You're going to end up with something like this somewhere. And it's, if it's not on this corner, it'd be across the street. You say that, but don't, don't count that it would be something nicer than what is being presented. It's going to happen. It's just, where is it going to happen?
C1, not C2.
Yep, that's right.
It's C1 right now, right? Okay, we're not interacting. I don't think it's going to make any difference, but we could.
Any quick moments talking to the mic so we can pick up?
I just asked if it was a benefit to discuss between ourselves the difference between C1 and C2 and what benefits that would have to the area to either have it as C1 or change it to C2, because that's really what it comes down to right now, right?
C2 with, with, with the restrictions noted.
Very good point, Mark. Thank you.
It's allowed in C1, Taylor.
Is that a question? I can answer that question.
Thanks.
Currently C1 and with no restrictions, you can do things such as, I said, 3,500 square foot restaurants, called neighborhood restaurants, four pump gas stations, retail, a lower square footage as well. You can do bars, restaurant. Oh, I said restaurants already. So those are things. C2 increases those limits, unlimited gas sales with a special use permit. So we're talking no restrictions. It also actually allows all those like automotive type of retail. A lot of these restrictions were mentioned in their proposed, adopt, the proposed adopt restrictions. So you're looking at size really of floor, floor area of these units or standalone buildings. And then peeking at those restrictions, that's literally all what they're looking at is trying to increase from 3,500 square feet, which I will mention, the Shops of the Woodlands is a development that's C1. And some of these restaurants were really struggling to fit into that box of 3,500 square feet. And it was, it's just the size. So Stouts is a good example. They were right at that level. And that's what you're looking at, at, for a restaurant at the size larger, when you get to 5,000 or whatever. That's the ability. And it's not the most intense zoning. We have C3. We have even C7, which is down the road at the Betplex. So it's, it's a community kind of commercial area. It's not regional. It's community in its description. So.
Thank you, Taylor.
Yep.
So I would just continue my comments. So what we're looking at here is a developer that does want to change some of it, not all of it, from C1 to C2. But in that process, they are willing to put restrictions that takes away the majority of the things that most of us would disagree having in our neighborhood. In addition to that, they're also going to take some of the C1 and turn it to, to, over to R3 and put in not single-family homes, but condo units, high value condos. So the way I look at this is you're getting rid of the C1 in a lot of the area. Yes, some of it's going to C2, but you're getting restrictions put on there that don't currently exist, which are pretty substantial. If I was living in that neighborhood, I would want those restrictions on that property.
Anyone else in the commission? Any last comments from staff? You have to have, no? All right, then we need a.
We need a lot of motions.
A lot of motions?
So we're starting with 2313.
23013.
Mr. Chairman, I will move for approval of case 23013, the future land use map amendment, parks and open space to ULI.
I'll second.
Is that ULI or UMI?
ULI.
Okay, you just got to type on this one then. So had UMI.
What's the next one?
UMI is 13?
Yeah. Oh, 13 is UMI? Okay. I amend my, my motion to UMI.
Okay. You have a motion? Do we have a second? Oh, sorry. Missed that, Scott. All right. Any discussion on the motion or second? I'm just going to give a little summary on, on why I'm going where I'm going with it. I think it truly was a mistake on the land use map. And I don't think it would be right, given the fact that it had been noted as C5 and C6, C6, C5 becoming C1 for 30 years or so, to say because of an error at some point, it should be now residential. I've heard comments on it. I don't, I don't think that's the case. You are realistically sitting in that intersection in our top five busiest intersections in the city. It's going to be four lane Devil's Glen with a full interchange stoplight there. It's got significant birmingham. I think that was put in as noted in anticipation of a very functional buffer. You can't even see the, the bottom half or so of any of those houses, maybe, maybe two-thirds. So I think there's good buffer with the existing space. We're off the Valley Winds substantially. There's going to be residential buffering in there. What I've seen as far as the concept plan looks very functional. Will we have some more cuts in the bike path? Yes, but I don't believe we're destroying it or wrecking it. I ride the bike path. I've got almost 300 miles on my bike this year already. I ride all over town. And I cross going down Devil's Glen and other places, all kinds of intersections or driveways and access points. So it, it, it didn't wreck it. It's still there. It's working fine. So sensitivity to increased traffic? Absolutely. But welcome to a growing community. We've grown from 30,000 to almost 40,000 people between our census and that's continuing to grow. That challenge will not go away. So for all those reasons, I'm going to support it. I will also be looking very carefully at the details of the site plan when it comes in. I think the developer has done a good job mitigating the ugly parts, I'll call it, of the potential C2. And I never like to threaten in any way that, hey, this could be a lot worse. But the reality is, it could be a lot worse. If somebody came in with a C1 permitted use, you all could end up with a lot less desirable development than was being proposed here today. So you've got some decent price residential, albeit some multifamily, some of what appears to be low-impact commercial on one of the five busiest intersections in town. And for those reasons, that's why I'm willing to support it at this point.
Right. I would like to just comment that I, I really hate telling.
Right. I would like to just comment that I, I really hate telling people it could be worse.
I do, too.
I'm not in favor of that, but I, I would like to say I think it may be better than you think it's gonna be. Because we, I do have, and I do live right near Crow Creek and Middle Road, and I like those little shops that are in there, and it hasn't increased our traffic flow very much at all. And I find them to be very convenient, and I like living near them. So I hope that this has the same effect for this neighborhood as well.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the motions?
Are we voting for everything? Just the first one?
Just, we gotta take each one. Yep. So for 23-013, we have a motion and a second to approve the future land use amendment, parks and open space to UMI. Roll call on the motion, please.
Gannaway?
I'm approving.
Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Approved.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes. Okay, we have case 23-021, future land use amendment, parks and open space to ULI.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve case 23-021, future land use map change to ULI.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-021, future land use amendment, parks open space to ULI. Roll call on the motion, please.
Gannaway?
Yes.
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we've got case 23-014, rezoning C1 to C2 commercial.
So this one and 22, is there a benefit to the neighbors and the safety to maintain C1? Or am I hearing that it's, C2 is such a similar?
I'm not sure I'm understanding your question.
C1 is, so.
C1 allows gas stations.
Okay.
Without restriction.
Not the only thing C2 does is maybe a bigger restaurant, bigger space. But as I described it, with these restrictions, this is like a hybrid C1. That's, kind of think of it that way. Clarifies it.
All right, so for 23-014, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-014, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, Ann. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call on the motion, please.
Gannaway?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes. Okay, 23, case 23-017, rezoning C1 to R1.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve.
Hold on, hold on.
Yep.
Before we move on, those who are still remaining, do they understand how this goes on from this point to the next approval process? To the, to the city?
Within the city. Like, what is the process?
So we're making, we're making a recommendation to the city.
Yep, the rezoning is being recommended right now. You have voted affirmatively on those, the future land use map and the two rezonings ahead, ahead of this question. And you're gonna make votes on the rest of them. Those votes are recommendations to council. Council will make a final deciding vote on the rezonings.
Okay.
And the future land use map.
Sorry, thank you.
Yep.
Ready?
Yep, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-017, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve case 23-017, rezoning C1 to R1. Roll call on the motion.
Gannaway?
Approve.
Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes. Okay, case 23-022, rezoning C1 to C2 townhomes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-022, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can I have the roll call, please?
Gannaway?
Approve.
Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Approve.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg? Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have case 23-023, rezoning C1 to R3. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-023, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, Scott and Ann, we have a motion and a second to approve case 23-023, C1 to R3. Roll call on the motion, please.
Gannaway?
Approve.
Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes. Okay, and then we have case 23-024, rezoning R1 to C1. Need a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-024, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for case 23-024. Can we have a roll call on the motion?
Gannaway?
Approve.
Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes. Okay. Anything else?
We need to note for the record that the last two cases were withdrawn, yeah.
Yeah, case 23-015 was withdrawn, item 16 in case numbers, item number 17, case 23-016 withdrawn.
I have no further updates.
I have a motion to adjourn. Okay, we're adjourned.